I would like to call the City of Norco City Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:09. The city clerk will take the roll.
Council members Newton, Bash, Hoffman, Mayor Pretem Hanna, Mayor Grunmeyer, all present.
Yes, thank you. So, at this time, the city council will recess to closed session to consider the matters listed on the agenda. Meeting of the Norco City Council. The city attorney will report on actions taken in closed session.
The city council considered those matters in closed session which are listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with Councilman Newton, and then remain standing for our invocation.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Aaron Diaz from New Beginnings Community Church.
Hi, thank you. If you'll join me in prayer. God, we just want to thank you for this day, Lord. God, we thank you for Norco. We thank you, God, for every family, every business, Lord, every livestock, everything, Lord, that makes Norco so wonderful. God, I just want to thank you that these council members are here to make the decisions. I ask for wisdom for them, Lord. God, I ask that you would provide what the city needs to just continue to grow and prosper. So, I thank you for this time that we have here, Lord. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we are going to do our National Poppy Day proclamation. So, if the ladies from the auxiliary would come up and meet me at the podium, please. Ladies, you want to -- yeah, go ahead and come on up. How are you? How was your event on Saturday?
It was wonderful.
Good.
Wonderful.
Good, good. Okay. So, I have a proclamation for you guys. We'll do that first, and then we'll let you guys say a few things. So, whereas the red poppy is nationally recognized symbol of sacrifice sworn by Americans since World War I to honor those who served and died for our country in all wars, and whereas the use of the poppy symbolically comes from Lieutenant Colonel McCray's poem, which movingly begins, "In Flanders' field the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row," referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned earth of the battlefields across Belgium and France where soldiers died fighting. And whereas the poppy as a memorial flower to the war dead can be traced back to a single individual, Moynah Michael, in November 1918, she was so moved by the poem that she wrote a response, "The blood of heroes never dies, but lends its luster to the red of the flower that blooms above the dead in Flanders' fields." And whereas the poppy program is the oldest and most widely recognized American Legion auxiliary program, utilizing the red poppy as its official flower, as a memorial tribute to honor the fallen, those who have died in service to their country, as well as the millions of Americans who have willingly served and continue to serve their country. And whereas the American Legion, with the support of Congress, has designated May 24, 2019, as National Poppy Day, and encourage all patriotic Americans to wear or display a red poppy on this day as a symbol of remembrance and hope. Now, therefore, I, Robin Grunmeyer, Mayor of Norco, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize the designation of May 24, 2019, as National Poppy Day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We just want to thank the city council and the mayor for our proclamation, and it is for a good cause. We're going to be located at State of Brothers with our puppy cans, so please wear your puppies when you see them. They're all going to be all over, so, yeah.
Free to.
Yeah, we're going to be at all the State of Brothers and whatever, so, thank you so much for this. And now, you have a second one.
Okay. Here's this one for you. I'm not dressed for this.
She's enough. She's ready to share.
I am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Your hands are ice cold. I've been in here since four. Mr. DeRosa, would you like to join me for our next presentation, please?
Thank you, Mayor Grunmeyer. And I'd like to invite Jennifer Ziegler up to the front here. Come on over right over here. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm a member of the Norco Economic Development Advisory Council, known as EDAC. And on behalf of the city council and EDAC, I am pleased to assist Mayor Grunmeyer with presenting this month's Business Appreciation Award to In-N-Out Burger. Everyone is familiar with the iconic In-N-Out, and as many of us have experienced, a shortage of cars in the drive-through line is very rare. This family-owned business has prided itself for great customer service, quality food, and being a great place to work with many opportunities for employee growth. They have a very select process of identifying communities and site locations for optimal investment opportunity, so Norco truly appreciates being identified as an ideal city for one of their sites. And from my own experience, there's never a shortage of customers at the Hamner location, which has likely proven the city of Norco to be a wise investment. Because In-N-Out is family-owned and maintains a relatively low-key profile, they don't brag too much about their contributions to their community. But let it be known that they actively support schools, youth sports, and community events in all the marketplaces that they serve. Plus, Norco residents and city government benefit tremendously from all the tax revenue that they generate. So, congratulations to In-N-Out for being a recipient of Norco's May 2019 Business Appreciation Award. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Mayor Grunmeyer.
So, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the City of Norco and city council, to present you with this plaque as an honoree for our business of the month, for your consistent contribution to our city's tax revenue, for making it iconic nostalgic brand of the all-American -- part of the all-American Horsetown USA experience. Thank you. Thank you very much. You want to say anything?
So, my name is Jennifer. I'm the manager of the Norco In-N-Out Burger. I've been with the company for 35 years, and I've been in Norco for about 12 years. I truly do love this town. I don't live in Norco. I live in Rancho Cugomanga, but living there and working here is a dream life, I've got to say. I have extremely great kids working at this store. I'm fortunate to be in an area where a lot of people like to work for In-N-Out, and I get to pick and choose who, you know, who gets to be lucky and come onboard with us. So, it's my pleasure to serve you guys. I know some of you guys are our customers. I see familiar faces. So, I would just encourage you guys, if you guys come in, you guys see me there, say hi. Thank you. Sure, thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and move into our presentations. So, our first presentation is going to be by Dr. Reese from Norco College, 10 to 15-minute presentation on our facilities master plan, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the board, and thank you to the staff members and community members. I'd like to step you through very briefly the education master plan and then the facilities master plan that comes out of that education master plan. My goal is to give you a 30,000-foot view of the plan, of both plans, and then I'm eager to receive your comments and ideas about how we can improve the plan, if at all. So, first, let me mention that we've been working on these two plans, the education master plan and facilities master plan, for about two years. Last year, the 2018-19 year, was mostly an internal dialogue happening at the strategic level with some of the strategic committees at the college. And then this past year, we've broadened the conversation to include the entire campus, a number of RCCD employees, a number of community members, a broad range of student members, and then we brought in a series of planning professionals. That's led to the two plans that I mentioned, that we hope to have to the board, to the RCCD board, the Riverside Community College District Board in June, so just about a month away. The education master plan really focuses on three strategic directions. I really feel like we're running in these directions, and I am trying to keep a runner's pace in these directions. I feel they're very important. The first one is moving the direction of student transformation. The second one is collaborate in the direction of regional transformation, and finally, the direction of college transformation. Let me step you through those three very quickly. First, with regard to student transformation, you know, we serve about 15,000 students now, and some of the students at Norco College come to us from very strong academic backgrounds. They did well in high school. They come from families that are well-educated, and we try to keep them on a strong path. But most of our students, a lot of our students, come from academically difficult backgrounds. They come from historically underserved communities. They come from cycles of poverty and low income. We have a lot of students that come from recent immigrant histories. We've got a lot of students that are coming from families where nobody in their whole family went to college, so they don't really have a lot of people that can help them in their family. So, we're trying to give those students an experience that completely transforms and changes the trajectory of their life. To do that, we're focused on four goals. The first one is access. We want to try to get more students in this region to go to college. We actually have a strategy where we're just working closely with the high schools in the area to help get students to go to any college. I would prefer it to be Norco College, as the president of Norco College, but that's really not the point. The point is to get more students to consider going to college, either for some kind of technical training that can move them right into a job, or some kind of two-year program that can move them on to the university. The second thing that we're working on is improving success. We want more and more students to come to the college and have a successful experience, and by that I mean finish their goals. If their goal is to get a certificate and move on to a job, or an AA degree, or just get ready to transfer to the university, all of those are successes in our mind, get more students to do that. We want all of our students to be successful, so we're focused on equity also. We have a couple of groups at Norco College that aren't having the same kind of success that students who don't look like them have, so we're focused on some very intentional equity strategies at the college. And finally, to implement all of those, we are really doubling down on the professional development at Norco College, so the training of all employees at Norco College, from the president on down. Everybody needs to raise their skill level in these areas in order for us to be successful. The second direction that we're running in -- oh, I wanted to mention real fast that while we are going to be working on these areas, we have been working on these areas quite a bit, and we're starting to get some results. We have seen a 9.6% increase in student attendance. We've seen an 18% increase, and this is just since 2015, an 18% increase in completion. Students of color have seen a 26% increase in completion and graduation rates. We've had a 50% increase in the number of students that are transferring to the UCs, like UCR, UC San Diego, things like that, and we're seeing really good results with regard to general fund income at the college and fundraising at the college. All right, the second direction that we're moving in is regional transformation. You know, we are a community college, and we really take pride in that community word inside community college. We belong to the community and feel that we should have an impact on the community somehow by partnering with everybody in the region. We hope to have an impact under Goals Six and Seven in two areas. One, we really want to have an impact on economic development, and there's two ways that we can help there. One is by training employees for the workforce and the industries that are in our backyard. A lot of employers say they can't find employees with the right kind of skills, and this is something that we're conscious of and working on. The second goal is general community development. What can Norco College do to help make our region a better place to live? This is a goal that we share with the city of Norco, something that you guys work on, part of your master plan as well. These are areas where we can collaborate. Some of the projects on the right-hand side of the screen are projects we're doing to help improve economic and development and community development. I don't have time to go into all of them, but I do want to mention one. One of the areas where we're really, really trying to have a concrete and specific solution for families has to do with the cost of education. The cost of education has been spiraling out of control for really, really a good three decades. It's been rising at a faster rate than real estate, than food, than cars, than almost everything. It's embarrassing how expensive college education has become, even public education. The exception to that rule is community college. It remains an affordable option. We're trying to keep it a very affordable option and a high-quality option for our students. So, this slide summarizes the strategy that I keep emphasizing wherever I go. We're partnering with all the high schools. We have a deep partnership with Norco High School and JFK, the two high schools inside the city of Norco, and we offer college courses for free at those high schools. We take professors to the high schools and offer courses there. At JFK, we do both. We have courses that we offer at JFK, and then, of course, JFK students can walk right across the parking lot to the campus there. It is entirely possible for students, and if I was raising my three daughters over again, this is what I would be emphasizing with them, it's entirely possible through this program to complete 30 units of college work while you're in high school, which is the equivalent of one year of college work in high school. That college -- that high school work that you do while you're -- or that college work that you do while you're in high school is free. The books are free, the tuition is free. Then you can come to Norco College for your first year, which would actually be your second year of college, but your first year at Norco. Your first year at Norco can be done for free if you're full-time, except for books. You'll have to pay for books, but all the tuition and all the fees are covered for free. And then transfer to a CSU like Cal State San Bernardino, or Cal Poly, or Cal State Fullerton, and do your junior and senior year there. If you were to do that strategy, you can see that it would cost about $50,000 total. Most of our students get financial aid, so it wouldn't actually be that out of pocket. But if instead you had gone straight to, let's say, Cal State Fullerton and did all four years there, it would cost almost double. It would cost $96,000, and most of our students and our families would have to borrow money for that. It would take four years to get it done, and in the model on the right-hand side, it only takes three years to get it done. On the far right, the other two bars, you can see the same type of idea for a UC. So, let's say you decided you're in high school and you decide you want to go to UCLA. If you go straight to UCLA for four years, it'll cost about $127,000. If you decide to do one year of college while you're in high school, that's free. Do your first year at Norco, that one's free, and then transfer to UCLA, the total cost is $65,000. It would save you $62,000, and you'll finish your degree one year faster. These are great solutions, I think, for families that will help really improve and raise the level of education throughout our region. Okay, the third area where we're focusing on is college transformation. We want to build a comprehensive college for the region. Our service area, if you think of our service area, picture the 15 freeway, it goes all the way north to the 60, and then if you get on the 15 and just drive south, just as you hit the Lake Elsinore border, that's the end of our service area. So, it's Harupa Valley, Eastvale, Norco, Corona, La Sierra, South Corona, Temescal Valley, Lake Matthews, all that area is our service area. We need to provide a comprehensive college, comprehensive community college, for the residents that live in that area, and we've been undersized for a number of years. We started out historically as a campus or a satellite of RCC. This was in the '70s and the '80s, all the way up through the original buildings in the 1990s. In 2010, we became a college, an accredited college, but we still kept a small focus and kept it around a technology-focused campus. As I mentioned, our goal is to move in the direction of a comprehensive college. If you think of Mount SAC, or you think of RCC, or think of Fullerton College, or Saddleback College, those are good -- if you're familiar with those colleges, those are good examples of comprehensive colleges. They have a full, broad range of academic programs. They have enough courses and enough capacity to serve the entire service area, and this is something that I think is critically important because of this last bullet here. Residents in our area are paying taxes for community colleges, and right now, those taxes are going outside of this area to fund comprehensive programs at other community colleges. This was appropriate, I think, maybe 30 years ago, when we had less than 100,000 people living out in this western part of Riverside County. But now, we've grown to a service area with about 306,000 people, and you guys know what the growth has been like in this part of the area. It's time to have a comprehensive college. In order to do that, we're going to have to hit six goals here. Let me jump right to that slide. First, we need to build out programs. We do not have a comprehensive range of programs, and this is especially true in the career technical area. We have nothing in agriculture. Agriculture is an industry in our backyard. We have nothing in healthcare. Healthcare is the largest industry in our backyard, and we have nothing in public safety. Public safety is also a large industry in our backyard. For years, residents in this area, if they wanted to study agriculture, they go to Mount SAC. If they want to study, if they want to become a police officer or firefighter, they go to Moreno Valley. If they want to go into healthcare, they go to RCC, they go to Moreno Valley, they go out of the area. We have programs in other areas, but we need to start building out programs in those areas. Goal number 10, we're going to need to build out, as we build this out, we're going to need to hire more people. So, if you know of people that are interested in being faculty members, tell them to keep an eye on Norco College. This is a place where we're going to be hiring faculty to support those programs as we build out. The last three programs or goals I'll mention, and then we'll head on to the facilities master plan, are we're going to need to expand our facilities. Even right now, our facilities are about 50% the size. We just did a complete analysis, space analysis, of the college, and we're about half the size we need to be with regard to science labs. We're about half the size we need to be for lecture facilities, and we are about a third the size we need to be for library spaces and student study spaces. As a result, a lot of students still can't find all the courses they need at Norco College. In fact, 20% of our students who are primarily enrolled at Norco College, they're still driving to RCC or Moreno Valley to take a college, and not a specialty course that's only offered there. They're taking GE courses that they just couldn't find because we don't have the classroom space or the lab space. We're going to need to build out operations so we remain efficient and effective, and finally, we have a full resource strategy in terms of how we're going to develop resources for the capacity growth that's coming our direction. So, that gives you a sense of where we're trying to head. Let me give you a flyover of what the facilities master plan looks like, and then I'll open it up to any questions you might have. This is a map of our current campus, and is there a red highlighter on this? Okay. Oh, there you go. Okay, thanks. That green one there, okay. So, you can see here, this is the current footprint of Norco College. These are the sea of parking lots that we have here, and the rest is vacant property. Our property is this black line covers here. Just to get your bearings, this is Third Street here. This is Hamner. 15 freeway would be over here. This is the Navy. This is the lake, all right. As we move forward, we want to develop the property much more. We're going to move arts and humanities into this part of the campus. Athletics, kinesiology, fitness resources into this area of the property. This will remain the core campus where you find things that belong to all students, like the library and learning support services, student support services, administrative services. The School of Business will go here. Social and behavioral sciences in this area. Our STEM facility, we're going to put here. We're trying to keep it as close to the Navy as possible because we're doing some STEM partnerships with the Navy. This becomes the new front door of the college with a kind of a greeting area, student services, a one-stop-shop area here. We have plans to put housing in here, mostly veterans housing connected to Veterans Resource Center here. This is JFK. Housing up in this area with an early childhood education center here on the corner for students with kids. And this is the agricultural area for the new program that's going to be going in that part of the campus. In terms of the buildings, I'm not going to go through every single building here, but I'll give you just a sense and happy to answer any questions when we get through here, but as I mentioned, this is the fine arts area. Here's a performing arts center. This is an outdoor amphitheater, which we're really excited about. It gives participants a great view of the lake, and you know, you see across the whole valley as you look out that way, especially at sunset, or even at night, you see the lights out over the whole valley. These are the athletic fields. These are the, you know, kinesiology buildings and spaces for students and community members. You get a sense of how Third Street's really changed. This whole area is parking lots right now. We want to build this so it's a tighter, kind of more walking campus. I'll get that. Parking is coming up. I heard somebody say parking. The pedestrian circulation is going to follow this main spine. This is the main spine in the campus, and we're going to add this spine that will help connect JFK over to the athletic fields. One of the things that JFK does not have right now is a way to workout, so they're very often, you'll see them kind of running down the street, or running down the horse trail, or I really want to give them something that they can use for their kind of PE activities. We've also added to this plan, you know, there's a horse trail, of course, that runs along Third Street here. We've added a multipurpose and horse trail that will go around the entire perimeter of the campus. This is, I haven't really paced it off, but it's two and a half, three miles, is what I'm guessing from the legend here. In terms of vehicular circulation, so we've had a lot of conversations about this. We had a number of community meetings. along Third Street here. We've added a multipurpose and horse trail that will go around the entire perimeter of the campus. This is, I haven't really paced it off, but it's two and a half, three miles. This is what I'm guessing from the legend here. In terms of vehicular circulation, so we've had a lot of conversations about this. We had a number of community meetings around this, around this plan here. We had an advisory group pulled together, made up of a couple of members from Norco City Council, a couple people from Corona Norco Unified School District, and a couple trustees from RCCD. If you recall on our last Facilities Master Plan, there was a suggestion to move a road down through here, through the neighborhoods, to build a road down through here, through the neighborhoods, and a road to build through here, through neighborhoods. We asked all the, you know, we held six or seven forums with community members and employees and asked everybody what they thought about that. And people hate, I want to stress that word, hate that idea, hate that idea, hate that idea. And if I lived in that neighborhood right there, I would also hate. Nobody wants a boulevard running in front of their house. So there is no plan, there is no suggestion in this Facilities Master Plan to move a road through a neighborhood. The advisory board that we met with suggested three things that we go think about. First, they said, hey, think about improving Third Street. So we did that right away. Third Street was always a four-lane road with a bunch of stop signs, two or three sets of stop signs in there, which caused this whole road to back up and it caused Hamner to back, back up all the way down to Second Street is really terrible. So we turned it into a six-lane road, took out the stop signs and put in a signal. And that's helped with a lot of the flow right off the bat. I talked to Andy about it, and can you confirm, Andy, that it's helped out a little bit on that, on Hamner? Okay. But as we increase this capacity, we're going to need to figure out a couple of things. First of all, we're going to need to build a loop around the campus. So this has a loop road that will allow us to get out. We want to consider maybe getting another road connecting out here. This would be a nice way to get out. Right here is vacant property, so there aren't any houses right there. But this piece of property, we don't own. This is owned by a guy named Eddie Fisher. So we've got to figure out, you know, if Eddie will let us build a road there or something like that. Another solution that the advisory board asked us to think about is how can we get out over here? So we could head out over here through Lampton. This is a, there's a hill right here that we'd need to consider. And it's a tight, it's a tight road. It's a two-lane road. We could also consider heading out through Market Street right here. Market Street's a little nicer, it's a little wider, and there's a signal right here. But there's a building right there, which is kind of a problem. Got to drive a road right through a building. But that's, that building belongs to Corona Norco Unified, and that's a professional development building. And we've been talking to them about moving these facilities up into one of these buildings up here and sharing professional development site ten. That's interesting. My favorite solution is just continue this road right up here and connect it to Fourth Street, which is a little off the map. But that, can you see that strip of road, that property right there? That's owned by the Navy. It's just a little piece. And so far, the Navy's been reluctant to let us have right-of-way through that road and connect it to Fourth Street because their main entrance is right up there on Fourth Street and they're worried about some disturbance there. So that's a possibility. The final one I want to mention is this possibility here. If we get this out to Western and then up the right-of-way here, it could connect all the way up to Fifth Street, up by the ball fields and the prison there. But we need to do this with consideration to the neighbors who live here. If we hug that right-of-way here, it'd be a road, a horse trail, a ditch, and then a backyard. And so we need to figure out how to mitigate that. So those are the transportation considerations that are being put into the map. We did include a new drop-off center here and drop-off center here. I think we've got a really good plan for how to maximize traffic circulation through the campus. And then we need to come up with one of these solutions for exiting and entering the campus. Somebody mentioned parking. We got rid of all those parking lots. We want to get parking, we want to get cars installed in parking garages, get them out of the way. There's one, two, three, four, five parking garages. We won't be able to build all those right-of-way. This plan, I keep telling all the faculty at Norco College, this plan has three phases. The first phase we do before I'm 60. The second phase we do after I'm 60. The third phase we do before I'm 70. That's how I'm personally thinking about the whole thing. It's probably going to take us till 2033 to build this whole thing out, but we still need to have a good plan for how we move forward with this. All right, I want to address this topic head-on because I know it'll come up and it's, and it's a real, it's a real issue. I don't mean to dismiss the issue. One of the issues that often comes up in Norco is, and this is a real issue, not a made-up issue, is 6% of the students come from Norco, but about 90% of the headaches caused by the college come to Norco. It's not a fair distribution. And this is accurate, that 6% still holding tight, it's about 6.2% now. The last time we looked at it, the last plan was maybe 15 years ago, it was 6%. A college does cause some traffic congestion. We need to figure out how to deal with that. Neighbors complain, not as much anymore, but they still complain about the indiscretions of young adults and doing stuff in neighborhoods. We're going to have all those students using Norco infrastructure while only 6% of the students are coming from Norco. We have improved the parking in neighborhoods, we haven't eliminated it. We still have some residents that call me. There's going to be increased noise, increased activity in the area. And some people complain about the high-density housing, the student housing that we're talking about. This is all accurate and I want to own it and say that I understand it and I hear it. I do also want to mention the following slide. Norco only has 6% of the students, but the city of Norco is going to experience about 90% of the benefits of this thing. And I'm serious about this. We're going to take regional dollars. We're going to take money from taxpayers in Harupa Valley and Eastvale and Corona and Temescal Valley, and we're going to build something here. There will be some things to mitigate, but there are going to be some benefits. We're building a park-like environment that's open to the public. It's going to be like having a park in our backyard that our region paid for. We're opening up agricultural programs. There is no performing arts center in the entire region. We're going to have it right there in our town, in Norco. We're going to have athletics and fitness facilities that are open to the public. But look, let's be realistic. Harupa Valley residents aren't going to drive to this area to go to the swimming area. People from Temescal Valley, this is mostly going to be used by Norco folks. You guys are going to end up with two major libraries, the county library that you already opened up, and a college library. The college library is always open to the public. It's going to be an asset for this region. We plan to develop it out in a mixed-use environment so that it has some retail in the area that will be available to the area. We already know that the campus and students, the campus, the employees spend right now about $55 million a year in the region. Most of that is localized. As we move towards larger numbers in 2030, we anticipate we'll be spending about $150 million a year on things like burgers and rentals and, you know, just the students and the faculty and the college itself purchasing things. The high-density housing, I think, is a great benefit to the city in the sense that every city is required by the state to have high-density housing. If we can move that pressure onto the campus, we can use private properties and the city for non-high-density uses, whatever you decide in that sense. I really like the idea of Norco College taking on the high-density challenge that the city of Norco needs, is required to meet by the state. We're adding horse trails to the area, paid for by these regional taxpayers. Good colleges do create an increase in property values, but that increase in property values doesn't extend out too far from the college, so it'll really only be felt by Norco College residents. We're hoping to have an economic development, and I'm really serious about this. We're hoping to have an economic development where we stimulate new industries around key academic programs. This is why we've been talking about photonics. And if we did that, the most significant benefit would come to the Navy, the college, and immediate manufacturing and commercial properties which would be located in Norco. It might have a long-term impact on the region. I hope it has a long-term impact on the region, but that impact for economic development would start out in the immediate market. Oh, I mentioned high-density housing twice here. Norco College goes all over the country promoting Norco College, and we are named for this city. So when we're out promoting Norco College, we are promoting the brand for Norco, the city of Norco also. I think there's some benefit to that. And this town is going to be known for two things after this is over. You're already known worldwide for a town that embraces, is Horsetown USA. And I think you're going to be the only small town in the entire United States with three high schools and a big college right in your backyard. I can't think of a small town that has kind of an educational presence like that after we're done with this area. So I do want to openly state that there are issues that we need to mitigate through together, but I think there's a lot of benefit that's going to come from the college by spending regional dollars in this area that mostly Norco's going to experience. All right, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have here.
Does Council have any questions for Dr. Reese? Councilman Newton?
Good report and presentation, and I appreciate it. Just generally, I certainly admire all your goals and your goal-setting for 2030. What do you project is the financial magnitude of your overall project?
We don't have a overall project on this, but this, for the whole thing, it's got to be over a billion dollars. So it's going to be, it's going to have to raise funding from a number of different sources. We have a general obligation bond coming up probably in spring 2020. That's going to be for RCCD, for all three colleges in the district. Right now, they're testing a bond at about $840 million. Norco College will get somewhere around 30% of that. But so that doesn't even, that doesn't, that gets us started. That gets us started on Phase One. We're going to need to consider other alternatives like legislative appropriations at the federal and the state level, which we've had some success with that. And then we've really deliberately tried to think through this plan as a mixed-use plan where we can do public-private partnerships. So just one tiny example is, oops, I went to the wrong button. One tiny example is this Regional Veterans Resource Center here. This is not just a resource for Norco College veterans. This would be a resource for veterans in the entire region. The Corona Vets Clinic and the Corona Vets Center are interested in being anchor tenants in this building and moving their facilities to this. And with that kind of approach, you can take a public-private partnership to development. You can build an asset that's, that is for Norco, Norco College, students in the area, and you can find a private partner to help build that out. So a lot of these things are kind of thought through that way so we can, we can develop these in pockets like that in P3 agreements.
Okay. I was just curious, I mean, I know it's very preliminary and that, and let me always say, I always support the veterans' housing. And I know where you're coming from with the, that housing in our housing element and those requirements. But, you know, looking big picture, if you're talking about a billion-dollar investment, and approximately 80% of your students come from South Corona, would it not be appropriate to take a portion of that billion dollars and build a South Corona campus?
We could build in South Corona. We have, we have a plan to put a beachhead in South Corona in partnership with Corona Norco Unified. The problem is, we own no land in, outside of this 141 acres here.
I got a guy for you.
Okay.
Okay. We have a Realtor. That's one of our commissioners, and I think for that price point you're looking at, I think he could help you.
Well, we can't spend a billion dollars on land and have no buildings, then we have no college. So, but I get where you're going with this, yeah.
Appreciate it, Doctor.
Any other questions for Dr. Reese? Thank you very much for coming this evening, Dr. Reese. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, at this time, we will move on to our next presentation, which is the Fourth of July celebration Silver Lakes. Good evening.
I wish we'd gone first after that presentation. We're just here to talk about a little party. Good evening, my name's Steve Thatcher. I'm the president of Activate Events. We've started working with Silver Lakes this past October, producing concerts and events on the property. We've now produced several over the last six months with a successful track record. And ourselves, along with Silver Lakes and hopefully the city of Norco, would like to produce a Fourth of July event to give back to the community. This event would take place on the main lawn compared to where we've previously been doing events, which is in the backyard. So it would be a bigger scale and scope. See if I have this down right. There we go. A little bit about Activate Events. We've been producing events for 10 years now, a great track record throughout Southern California, San Diego, Arizona, and Central California. But we entered into a partnership with Silver Lakes a few months back over the next several years to produce family fun events and concerts on the property. And so we are here to do an event on the Fourth of July called Art Country. Fourth of July spectacular. Gates would open at 12 noon. We would produce a professional concert on the main lawn from noon to about 9:15, and then would lead into a spectacular fireworks show from 9:15 until closing for about 30 Concert would be artists, you know, well-known artists like Sugar Ray, Smash Mouth, country artist Lauren Elena, some pretty big names. We would have a kids' corner, craft beer section for dads, a Big Ferris wheel on property, probably a water slide being that's in the early part of July with the heat, petting zoo, some other attractions, and some great food vendors, barbecue vendors, maybe even a barbecue competition if we can put that together in time. So a lot of family-friendly activities going on on the property. You know, it's hard to anticipate on the first one what the attendance would be. We would like to make this free to Norco residents if they register on our website, so there would be no charge for Norco residents. So I think the attendance could be, you know, relatively good size. We'd estimate probably 15,000 in the first year and make this an annual event if it was a success for everybody. Hard to estimate, but we would have them register online so we can kind of keep tabs of how many people we anticipate showing up. Let's see what else. There'd be a lot of media partners involved. We tie in with local Inland Empire and Southern California radio stations, media outlets to really put this on the map. And I think it would be, you know, a great staple event for the city of Norco and a great give back to the community now that we're so involved in Silver Lakes. And I know Silver Lakes is very on board to give back to the community as well. So the demo of the event, I mean, we think it's families, you know, being that it's a free event, especially at Norco residents and very inexpensive to outside the area. You know, we're thinking 18 to 65-year-olds, probably families with small children, young adults, everybody from the college, of course, could come. Probably split pre-evenly, male versus female, young, single professionals as well. Just all-round, you know, family-friendly event. As I said, the doors would open at noon, and then we'd start music around 12:30 and run right up to about 9:15 and then lead straight into the fireworks. With any big event, which we produce events up to about 30,000 people, we just produced one on Huntington State Beach with Tim McGraw and other big country acts. We had a little over 20,000 people on site for the day from 12 noon to 9 p.m. with no major incidents. And I think working hand-in-hand with law enforcement like we have over the last few events, having about 100 trained festival security personnel, and then using the same, implementing the same security measures that we've used for the previous events like wanding guests and walking through metal detectors and, of course, IDing and wristbanding, identifying 21-plus adults if they plan on consuming alcohol. Those would be all the same security measures that we would put in place, and seems to work very well for us. So this is kind of what we had in mind, and we wanted to come to City Council and share the great news with you and get your feedback on it.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from Council? Oh, Councilman Newton? Oh, Councilman Newton?
They're all shy. I think this is a great idea and very gracious. If I understand correctly, this would be at no cost to Norco residents to attend? Correct?
That is correct. We would work with the city through some marketing channels, maybe through the Water District to do maybe a bill stuff or something like that to alert the guests and banners. What we'd like to do is provide a unique promo code to Norco guests that they could go to the website, and it would basically cancel out any cost to them.
But, you're not looking for any financial participation from the city?
We'd like you guys to pay for the event.
I beg your pardon?
No, no, no. We would be footing the bill for this one, yeah. This really is a give-back from us.
Kid here.
No, I mean, if there were any city resources, you know, another thing is having displays from the Police Department, Fire Department, stuff like that onsite, we think would be a great element to enhance the event, but no financial contribution from the city.
And you pay for Sheriff's Department costs or Fire Department costs and all of that, so it'd be no cost to the city?
That's what we're proposing, correct.
Did you have a follow-up question, Mayor?
I don't think so.
Well, I guess I'll ask this, we had talked about this a little bit before, was that, how would this impact our city Fourth of July activities like we have now that are, you know, at Ingalls Park, the trail ride for the residents, and our Fourth of July at Pike's Peak Park?
We would continue the mayor's, annual mayor's ride at Ingalls Park. That would still happen in the morning. The activity and games that we do, or the family activities, we would look at keeping it at the park. However, it's our belief that we would eventually bring those activities to Silver Lakes. That would be the objective. It's just so, with the notice of trying to partner in such short notice of putting all that together, I actually see in the future that the actual mayor's ride would relocate out there, and when we develop the Causeway, there would be a great ride from that point all the way through Eastville, through that trail system, around and back. I think that could be another additive, and we might want to go back and forth on that. But, I think that that could be another marriage that would be developed for this event early in the morning. That's one of our issues now, is we start pretty early in the morning so that we beat the heat. So, that would still continue at Ingalls.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, and maybe you should coordinate that, Brian, because that would also free up staff time and give them the holidays off, too. Or not? All right. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Councilman Bash?
So, I think this is phenomenal. I'm excited. I think it's going to be absolutely fantastic. I love the idea that Norco residents, it'll be free. I'm glad you've worked that all out. Does that include the parking fee, or is it free for Norco residents?
Parking would still be as it is for a normal concert night, so if you did park on property, that you would have to pay for parking, but that would really be the only fee, or if you purchased, you know, food or beverage.
So, you could stuff 50 people into the car and they could go right on in?
If they all have seat belts, they can come in, yeah.
Oh, no, seat belts, that's not a rule.
We want to buy by the loggia, you know?
Anyway, this is amazing. We started the mayor's ride because we couldn't have fireworks out by Beacon Hill. Basically, the Fire Department shut it down, and so, we started, we had the light show one year, and I am just really super stoked because this is something we talked about with Silver Lakes eight, nine years ago, hoping to get this to happen. I know this is probably going to cost you one chunk of change, and I hope you break even, because we really are your partners. And you did leave something out, Brian. We're known for Horsedown USA, we're known for Norco College, and we're known for Silver Lakes. So, I just want to make that point. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Just to add, staff will be working with Steve and his group and the Silver Lakes staff on coordination of this, as we do with any of our logistics that would be on events out there, and coordinating our efforts as this would be as a partnership. We would do that normally, but we would love to see this grow. And to do that, we're going to need to be engaged in it, too.
Because my understanding of free is maybe a little different than you. If it's free for Norco residents, they would not have to pay parking?
They would have to pay for parking. Anybody that parks on site would have to pay for parking. If they want to walk in or if they take the shuttle, then they don't. But, parking is parking. Free admission to the event.
Okay, if parking's parking, free's not free, then, to your logic?
Free to come into the front gate, to enjoy the concert and the fireworks and all the amenities.
And you're willing to split the parking fee with the city of Norco, then, if you're going to charge Norco residents?
If you split the bill with us to produce the event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I think it's a real good deal because ever since we quit doing the fireworks, we hear all that, all year long, about no more fireworks. And I think, myself, I don't think the people would mind paying a parking fee to go in and see the fireworks and everything. I don't know, waive the gate fee, that'd make them happy, too. So, glad you're doing this, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your effort on this and trying to put this together, and it's like Kevin said, this is one of the original things talked about in the development agreement we had with them. And I hope Caltrans approves you shooting the fireworks off that close to the interstate, because when I did an event down in Elsinore next to the interstate, they about ran me out of town. So, good luck on that one.
Yeah, thank you. We're working on multiple layouts to get approvals.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for your time. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Arden, do you want to? Sure.
First of all, fireworks are going to be... Because they've already got permission from Caltrans to do the fireworks, the fireworks on the JCSD side. That's already permitted. And from our point of view, the fireworks are a big deal. Half an hour of fireworks is a lot of money, and you haven't had in a long time. And we think that, you know, Norco is really an all-American town, and when we started this whole situation with Silver Lakes, we wanted to have one event that really was about Norco. And this is truly, even though your question was a good question, we're not asking you for any money. He's taking an enormous risk. I've asked him to take that risk. He could lose hundreds of thousands of dollars this year. But, I think in terms of the public view of you being the host town and with us being the partner, that over time, this will be the most important Fourth of July event in the Inland Empire. And I think Norco deserves that, and we're proud to be part of it. We're good Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a request from Norco Ag students to present a donation to the animal shelter. Is that something we want to consider?
Sure. It's probably getting close to their bedtime anyways. They might be familiar faces.
I have econ homework to do from Ms. G right here, so, all right. Thank you for letting us come out tonight. So, May 4th, Saturday, we had a car wash to raise money for the Norco Animal Shelter. Each member of our group was given $5 to create a project to raise money to give to a charity that we wanted to, that we all chose upon. We had 20-plus kids that helped with the car wash on that Saturday from 10 to 3:00. And then, we also worked, we also split in half and did a 50-50 raffle. And in all, we raised over, we raised $850.22. $850.22, oh, my bad. And then, for just the car wash alone, we raised $725.22. Most of that was donations, and it was pretty cool. And then, we also had the Norco Animal Shelter there with dogs and a couple cats, and we had that, people who were getting the car washes, they were, they went and just to see the cats and see the dogs and see what they wanted to do and see if they wanted to adopt some. We actually did get one dog adopted, which was really cool, by one of our fellow students, and it was pretty funny. So, throughout this project, we learned how to organize a group, get together and organize, pay for expenses like food, supplies, posters, stuff like that, tickets, especially for the 50-50 raffle. We also learned how to do on-the-spot problem-solving. And through the 50-50 raffle, we learned how to interact with people, and we'll talk more about the 50-50 raffle with Alyssa.
So, through my past rodeo cleaning skills, I learned to do a lot of 50-50 raffles, and I decided to get the kids that couldn't come to the car wash. So, we decided to take our tickets from Staples, and we spread them through neighborhoods. I sold a couple through my mom's work friends, and then I also sold them at rodeos. We actually raised $250 in the 50-50 raffle through, like, strangers and friends, and gave 125 to a local Norco resident. But, thank you. And we raised 125 to give back to the Norco Animal Shelter. Thank you.
Does Council have any questions or comments of these young people? All right, thank you. You're going to give it to him. Yeah, okay. He will take your, he'll take your money. All right, thank you, you guys. All right, so, you guys owe the city clerk a thank you for getting you moved up on there. All right, so, we're going to go ahead and go to our regular business agenda. So, number one, City Council Communications and Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. So, we are going to start with Councilman Hannah.
Got a couple of little videos to show you. Besides all that, I attended the League of California Cities Mayor Breakfast in place of Mayor Grunmeyer the other day out in Banning, and there was 11 of us mayor, 11 city representatives out there. Main topic was the four major disasters that Lake Elsinore had back in the winter and how they survived them. Then, I attended the American Legion 100th Birthday Celebration, attended the League of Cities, California Cities Riverside County Division in Palm Desert with Councilman Bash and Hoffman and City Manager Andy O'Curro and our Deputy City Manager Petrie. That was quite a drive out there and back. Then, we have, we've moved the NART headquarters back over to Hillside Station 47, and we got more room over there for storage and training and stuff. I've got a little short video here on the progress of the 15 freeway express lanes construction here. So, you'll see what's going on on here.
The Riverside County Transportation Commission presents the Interstate 15 Express Lanes Project. Construction of the 15 express lanes began in April 2018, and the project is now more than a third complete. The new lanes remain on schedule to open in 2020. The project, which will include multiple entrance and exit points to and from the express lanes along the 15-mile corridor, will expand RCTC's tolling network to create travel time savings and travel time certainty.
I didn't have nothing to do with making this video, this is Matt still.
The Riverside County Transportation Commission presents the Interstate 15 Express Lanes Project. Construction of the 15 express lanes began in April 2018, and the project is now more than a third complete. The new lanes remain on schedule to open in 2020. The project, which will include multiple entrance and exit points to and from the express lanes along the 15-mile corridor, will expand RCTC's tolling network to create travel time savings and travel time certainty.
Hey, Matt, we can skip that one and work on it for the next time if you want to.
You got to tell it was 2:20 to get it done anyway.
Yeah. There is a little diagram of how the West Nile virus is transmitted, how it starts in, where it goes, and the circle it makes getting to humans and horses. And then, we've got one more, this is a very interesting little slide here. This is not my, I do have a funny here. This is something that the mad scientists come up with out in Vector, and this shows how they extract the fluid out of a mosquito to make the malaria vaccination, malaria vaccine. There was like 440,000 people died in 2016, I believe, across the world with malaria, and it's getting worse worldwide. We have them here in California, but they have this tiny guillotine that they made at John Hopkins University, and they actually decapitate those little mosquitoes. There's their heads hanging there. And then, they go in there and extract that serum out of their neck, out of their head to make the vaccine with for malaria. I don't know who thought of that, but that little guillotine, we don't have a picture of it on there, but it is real tiny, and it'd have to be, if you think about... Oh, and they whack the heads off of 30 of them at a time, so, it's quite a little operation. And this is the kind of stuff we get to see every month out at Vector, the worldwide scientists all work on these projects, and it's pretty interesting that the stuff they come with. But, thank you, Matt, and we'll get that other video going by the next thing, but this will give you something to think about next time you see a mosquito, is how you're going to whack his head off. Thank you.
Councilman Hoffman?
It's new meaning to off with her head. I was pretty busy just going through your real tend-to-leave-and-bound celebration. They're getting up to their goal, which is pretty interesting. The Tri-Cities meeting, this is a new meeting, a new group. We're working with the city of Aruba Valley and Eastville, basically to discuss, work together to oppose the Southern California and Riverside Transmission Reliability Project, so, because a lot of the negative things. One of the things I want to highlight, though, is the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza Executive Committee. I want you all to put your calendars, mark this on. Monday, May 27th, we're starting the continuous salute at 9:00 a.m. It's going to run until 11:00 a.m. Your veterans and your veterans' family and that, you want to salute the flag during that time. And then, the ceremony begins at 10:00 a.m. And this year's, our special guest speaker is going to be Deputy with Riverside Sheriff's Department, Steven Lick, I'm going to pronounce his right name wrong, Lykopolis. Lykopolis. He is a veteran, and he's very inspirational in his speaking ability. So he's got a lot of good things to say, and we want you all to be there on Memorial Day. Again, it's a ceremony, remember those who gave all. And then following that, and Matt, if you can play that video, if you were there last year, you got to see our first Pitchfork Steak Fundue. And hopefully this one won't stop. And it's a minute long, but this is what we had last year. At the memorial. And if you haven't been to Plaza, that's it. Of course, our President Dave Overstreet. But we had quite a few people up there. Think Public Safety, yes, that's me. And then this is following, up at the Pol barn, Pitchfork Steak Fundue. And the reason the Rotary's on there and does this, they help fund the memorial Plaza's POW MIA monument up there. So please, come on out to the memorial, stay, and buy your tickets, come up to the Pitchfork Steak Fundue. Again, some of the proceeds go back to the memorial, and other things that the Rotary does. I appreciate it. And it was good food. I don't think I had any complaints. Oh, this year we're having a magician, along with Hawaiian dancers, they'll be back. And we have a DJ, so you'll have fun. It's a good way to start your summer. Thanks, Pat.
All right, Councilmember Bash.
That's kinda hard to top. The tri-county thing, by the way, what we're hoping that's gonna grow into is a partnership between Corona, Norco, Aruba Valley, Eastvale, Ontario, Chino, trying to create a region that gives us a voice. As some of you may or may not know, Sacramento is kind of, kinda wants to take away all local control, and what we're hoping is no matter who is our elected representative, whether they listen or they don't listen, we can have some kind of push. I also attended the Southern California Association of Governments Conference. I was the one that did the short straw. The truth is, it was actually a really good conference. The nice thing is, I was around just about every city in Southern California. And Republican, Democrat, Liberal, Conservative, they're all extremely upset about the housing element and a lot of the things that are coming down the pike. SB 50 was kind of the talk of the conference. People are very, very nervous about what that means. They're all trying to be exempted from it. If you don't know what that is, it essentially says they can come into your neighborhood and they can buy a piece of property next door to you in a single-family development, and they can build an apartment complex. To simplify, interesting thing, the people, we found out at the League of Cities, that a lot of the people that are behind this have exempted their own communities. So I'm really hoping, I think that Senator Roth is listening, and I don't know, I haven't heard from our Assemblywoman at all. I've sent her an email and have gotten no response. Other than that, that's about all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Newton?
That, thank you, Mayor. That's just about it right there. Attended the Chino Basin Desalter Authority Board Meeting last week. Just pretty much business agenda, nothing out of the ordinary to report. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, and the mayor and I attended the grand opening of Fazoli's. And had to keep her in line, but I'll let her give that with her report.
I actually have nothing to report. Thank you, Councilman Newton. So we will move on to item number two, which is our City Council Consent Items. All the items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Council, are there any items that you would like to have pulled?
Mayor, I'd like to pull an item.
Okay.
2B.
2E, okay.
Move to approve the rest.
I'm gonna go ahead and pull item G. C. So I have item C, E, and G. Is that correct? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the rest.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of C, E, and G.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and start with you, Kevin, with item C.
I just wanted to congratulate Steve and planning and anybody else associated with this on item 4C. We have yet another hotel coming in. I saw the rendering in your office. I was, I got a couple things I'd like to tweak, but I was really, really pleased with the idea that that was a long haul for you. Really appreciate it. 108 rooms, four-story, between Bob's Big Boy and those other buildings. So I'm really excited about that. And you will get the sticker for Bob's. You'll take care of that. Anyway, I just want to congratulate you two, Andy. Thank you very much for the good work on this. Thank you. That's all. Motion to approve.
There's a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve item C.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item E?
B.
Yes, actually I did. Oh, B is envoy?
Yes.
Oh, I hadn't marked as E. I'm sorry.
Fine, I was just gonna go through the calendar and wait till the end, but...
Okay. So do you want to do B right now, Cheryl?
Yes. Just quickly, I would like to recommend approval of the April 17 study session minutes, as well as the May 1 study session minutes and the regular meeting minutes of May 1st. But continue the study session minutes of March 26 to the June 5 meeting.
Very good. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve item B.
Can you please, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So then the last item for number three is G, and I pulled that. So I talked to Roger this morning because he wasn't gonna be able to be here as far as the contract goes. I know in our last discussions on this that he's started to provide quarterly updates, which are appreciated and been a huge improvement. But I did talk to Roger about the potential of maybe incorporating over the next, you know, however long the period is, some SMART goals for him, measurable outcomes for his contract. He seemed receptive. We did have some discussion about the fact that sometimes some of his work is difficult to measure because of the nature of his work. But I just wanted to go on record as saying that I've had that discussion with Roger, and it's definitely something that I would like to look into, is having three to five SMART goals for him.
Can I?
Other discussion?
Yeah, I was gonna pull this also. I work really closely with Roger, and I totally, absolutely get where you're coming from. But the way I look at Roger's work is I look at, if you were to put down on a resume, if he was gonna go to another city, all of the things that he's been a part of. And you start looking at the hotels, and you start looking at Silver Lakes, and you look at all the different things that have been accomplished, you have to go, wow, that's amazing. The problem is, is that I've been with him when we go to an ICSC conference, and he's working on stuff that literally, five, six, seven years, all of a sudden, something happens. So I'm, I totally get where you're coming from, but I also want to make sure, and I know you didn't mean, and I absolutely know you're not saying this, but I think the guy does one heck of a good job. And again, if you just put down what he does on paper, for what we're paying him and the return we've gotten on that investment, I think is substantial. I'm not gonna go too far in the past, but I can remember a time when economic development in the city of Norco was non-existent. And so I look forward to you working with him. I think that's a great idea. But I just also want people to know that he has done a really, really good job. And I know you weren't saying he wasn't, I get that, and I totally understand the quarterlies and all that stuff. But the improvement since he's come aboard to the city of Norco, I mean, he helped us dig out of probably the worst economic hole we've ever had in this city's history. So I just kinda wanted to emphasize that, and I'm totally on board with finding some goals.
Any other comments, or Councilman Newton?
And Andy. I had a similar conversation with Roger today, and we talked about just clarification on this, on the second year on the contract, the 2% increase. And it was just a, you know, the reasoning for it. So we just took it as a cost of living increase. And we also had a similar discussion in regard to performance and goal setting and things like that. And overall, it was a good conversation. I mean, I'm happy with his performance, and I do understand that it's hard to list specific goals for that type of position. But I think we were on the same page probably with the discussion we had with him, so...
Well, and I'd just like to make it clear that this is something that I'm hoping to see across the board. I'm not, I mean, on this contract, obviously, I'm singling somebody out, but I think it's something that I want to see across the board, not just for this one position, so... But I had the same experience with Roger. Our conversation was pleasant this morning, so... So I just want to go on the record, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to public comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete your speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment.
Bonnie Slager?
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for the volunteer appreciation dinner last night, a very nice event. Thank you. Second thing, with the 4th of July event at Silver Lakes, I am concerned about the fireworks due to the animals. When we used to have the fireworks over here at the community center, it was close enough to my house that I did end up with a vet call one night, one 4th of July, from the event. And I realized a little further, and I was happy to hear that they're saying they're gonna do it on the Aruba side. But I think it's really important to get the word out to everybody that lives in Old Town and along the bluffs. I turn on every light in my arena and my stalls and everything to minimize the effect of the fireworks, and so I am concerned about that. The other thing is, tomorrow night is our Norco Horsemen's Association monthly meeting, and our speaker is Doron Nelson from the California Highway Patrol. And he's going to talk about the licensing requirements and the vehicle code in relation to pulling trailers. And of course, we're more concerned about horse trailers, but it is any kind of trailer. So if you have a big living quarters horse trailer and you're trying to pull it with an F-150, that probably isn't gonna fly. Some of the bigger trailers actually need larger vehicles, and in some cases, you actually needed a commercial license. But it's not just horse trailers. We have a lot of people in town that pull toy haulers, and then they load their pickup truck with motorcycles and ATVs, so the pickup trucks, you know, noses up in the air, and then the trailers look like a nutcracker. And you can see a lot of things going up the Cajon Pass that probably shouldn't. And so I would encourage you to come to our meeting tomorrow night. If you have friends that do pull horse trailers to come, he will do a presentation, but he will also have an opportunity for people to talk individually to him. So you can say, well, I have a such-and-such truck and such-and-such trailer, and he can tell you if you need any special license yourself, if you have enough truck for your trailer, and so on. So it's 7 o'clock tomorrow night at the American Legion. There's no cost, and I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Jim Pollard?
Evening, councilmembers, Mayor. I'm here to ask you, we're having, Boy Scouts are having a car wash this Saturday at the Tractor Supply between 8 and 1 o'clock. And I'm really proud to have other scouts from Troop 99, I think, back here for a meeting, and the youth here from the school. This is really nice that we have so much youth participation in this community. So the car wash is this Saturday at Tractor Supply. It's a $5 donation. And the reason for that is they're trying to raise money for their summer camp, and they're going to Oregon this year. So there is a little more cost to ball. So appreciate getting the word around and to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
It'd be 8:00 in the morning till 1:00 at Tractor Supply on Hammer.
Tony Morrow?
Good evening to all of you, and I think all of yous know me, and I know all of yous. In front of you is the pictures of Ling when she died, and they wanted the, Cheryl and Erwin want me to give those to you, because that was the significant evidence that got the glyphosate in Roundup listed as a carcinogen. I think yous have probably all heard what's going on with Monsanto right now. The last case was awarded $2 billion, right, to the plaintiffs. And when I hear that, I just smile and say, hey, did something good once in my life. The other thing that's happening, we're working on trying to get a different herbicide here in Norco. We're still using the killer, you know, and it's really bad. I had, on Valentine's Day, my cat died of lymphoma cancer, right? And it's all over the place. The, if you look at the dog deaths right now, 50% of dog deaths under eight years old is due to cancer, and 85% over cancer. We have a significant problem here. And the place is just, you know, the glyphosate's all over the place. The other thing that, if you look at, I looked at all, I looked at 375 different herbicides, and they all use glyphosate, you know? So it's gotta be really, when we decide that weeds are more important than people dying, we better be careful on what we use. In fact, I think I worked with Hank from Petrie's, and we did a test a couple of years ago on a Roundup versus a material that I made up. And I look at, I look at the test lots right now, and it's still mind-beats Roundup. And it's, and the difference in cost was Roundup goes for $20 to $60 a bottle, and my stuff's about $2, you know, a bottle. And so I, what I, I think it's important that we keep pushing, and I've talked to Kevin about this, on getting the glyphosate out of our system here. It's really bad. Any questions that I could answer on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and move into Legislative Matters, item number five. No new evidence will be heard from the public as the public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed. So we have item A, Ordinance Number 1050, second reading. There's, okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt, Ordinance Number 1050.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Just as a reminder to the audience, we will go in this order for the presentation of discussion. We'll have a staff report and presentation. We'll have council's questions of staff. We'll have public speakers in favor, against, and neutral. And then it will come back to the council for a discussion and action. So we have item A, which is an order of procedure and resolutions to initiate proceedings for a Prop 218 hearing for LMD number two, and we will hear from, Brian, are you going to start the report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, and audience. Tonight before you is the adoption of resolution number 21919 approving the Engineers' preliminary report for the increase in annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2019-20. This is required, a 218 hearing is required for, to increase the levy that is being proposed. Over the last few months, staff has invited property owners within Landscape Maintenance District Number Two to meetings in which we review the annual Engineers' Report. Those meetings were conducted on April 10th and April 27th. Back in February, staff met with the city council to review the assessment and to look at the proposed levy that staff is recommending. The purpose of the meeting was really to inform the owners within the district of what a 218 vote is, and also what would be required in this additional increase in this levy, and if the levy was not passed, what would be the outcomes should we have to make reductions in that annual budget. I want to say that I thought all the meetings with the residents who did show up were very productive. There was a lot of good communication. The meeting we had in Norco Hills Park, which is part of LMD number two, was, I thought, very receptive with those who showed up. There was a lot of good questions and comments that went on in that particular meeting. At any of the meetings, there was no really, what I want to call outward opposition to an increased levy. There were concerns about increasing it. I would say the summary would, no one wants to see the level of maintenance reduced. The one big particular question that came up, and particularly at Norco Hills Park, was the issue of the repayment of the debt that has been earned over the last couple fiscal years. That debt is estimated to be about $83,787. Council had had this discussion prior to this and had identified to repay back that debt. The meeting at Norco Hills Park was one that where the, what I want to say is the residents were very receptive of increasing the assessment, but wanted the council to consider to absolve them of that debt and leave those funds annually, increase it, and leave the funds within the assessment district or fund balance. And that money would be used for infrastructure, particularly replacing trail fencing over a period of time. The group that met in the park also asked that the 1.5% contingency be added back into the increase of the assessment in order to stay up with inflation, as sometimes the CPI does not do that. And that contingency would be part of their annual fund balance as well. So that, I thought, was very receptive of them, of really dealing with all of the issues and going through it. What I have is I put together a little, so this is the assessment. Let me go back. The assessment is 219 homes that are in part of LMD number two. The 2018-19 budget was 188,963. The maximum assessment was $665.01. The assessment can only increase by the Consumer Price Index. The Consumer Price Index set for this upcoming fiscal year is 3.05%. The previous deficit was about $40,000 with an estimated 1819 deficit of 43, and that's where we got the 83,786. The estimated cost to replace the equestrian trail fencing that exists today in the assessment would be about $476, $476,800 in today's dollars within that whole district. This is the second-largest assessment district in the city. This is the annual Engineers', Proposed Engineers' Report. This is also identified as Part B or exhibit within your staff report tonight. So what we've done here is we've identified the Engineers' Report that basically outlines the cost of what we are proposing within the assessment district. I know it's kind of hard to see, but it is there. The Proposed Engineers' Report in this particular assessment would identify two different things, and let me just go back here. Sorry. And I lost that. Matt, can you help me out here? I don't know why it's jumping. Bottom line, if we were to compare the budget that is being proposed, which we've also identified as an exhibit within the staff report, we've identified $16,000 in trail fence replacement. That is staff's recommendation. What is being proposed tonight as part of the assessment is that if the passage of this 218 assessment was to pass by the residents, which requires a simple majority, $16,000 would be put into the fund balance, and that would be part of the replacement fund for trail fence replacement. Should the 218 not pass, staff would be recommending that the $16,000 would be left in the assessment fund balance, but that would pay back the debt. So the objective, and the residents who did show up in the park were very supportive of going out and going door-to-door and promoting the passage of this 218 hearing. So what we've, what we are recommending as part of this intent is, is that the $16,000 that would be, that was identified to repay back that deficit would remain in the fund balance, and that would go towards trail fence replacement. Should it fail, and the ballot would be written this way, that the $16,000 would be used to repay the debt back to the city. And what I've identified in here as part of the assessment, should 218 fail, the parkways inside the Landscape Maintenance Central would be maintained and reduced. The expenses for maintenance, electricity, and water, trees, plants will eventually die, and then those would be removed. Trail fencing will be removed as it deteriorates or is damaged throughout the assessment district. It would not be replaced. Impact to the neighborhood, aesthetics, curb appeal will result in potential devalue of properties within the development. The slopes and parkways along Norco Hills Road will not be maintained, reducing the expenses for maintenance and water. Trees and plants will eventually die and will be removed. There will be no reserve for any future improvements. And that's the potential cuts that we would have to make to have this assessment stay within what the value would be of what is collected in that assessment today. If the 218 passes, based on staff's recommendation, the city will absolve the district for the city-funded deficit estimated to be $83,787 and earmark the repayment of $16,000 shown in the Engineers' Report for Trail Fence Replacement. The operating contingency of 1.5% would be funded to provide additional funds for future increases. All maintenance levels will remain the same. Parkways will have funding for replacement. Trail material will be added to the existing trail system beyond landscape maintenance requirements due to natural reduction of material. Trail maintenance will continue, which provides response during inclement weather. Reserves will accumulate for future improvements after city deficit is satisfied. Neighborhood aesthetics and curb appeal will be uniform and maintained for standards throughout the district, maintaining property values. I do have with me tonight, from RHA, Cody Howard, who is here. Dominic was not available tonight and is out of town, and so Cody is here as one of the engineers representing RKA, who has done the Engineers' Report, and he's here to answer any questions that the city council has. So with that, I'll conclude any comments I have. I understand that tonight's action is an intent hearing. With approval with the council, this will go, the ballots will be sent out at the end of the month, and the hearing will be July 17th, in which the 218 hearing will be conducted here at City Hall during a council meeting. With that, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff?
Brian, I do. I can't, I'm there. And I'm looking at your, the past Proposition 218 hearing. So in this, we're going to forgive them the $83,000 if that passes, and is your proposal?
That's, that's what we would be recommending tonight. That money that would be paid back would stay within the district for infrastructure improvements.
Infrastructure?
Such as trail fencing.
For the fencing, yeah.
Right. If, if it was to fail, the ballot will be written in both ways. If it was to fail, that $16,000 would still be paid back to the city in over 4.7 years, almost five years. It would be paid back to you if it fails. The incentive is really with the residents to try to pass this.
Well, I understand, and I'm just, $83,000 is a lot of money, to forgive a debt. That, how long has that been? I know at one time it was only 20, and now it's up to $83,000?
That's based on our estimates to fiscal year end. Going into this fiscal year, it was around $40,000. Going into this fiscal year end is another $43,000. So it's about $83,000 is what is estimated. We won't know until final numbers come in and after our audit, but our estimates currently right now are $83,000 and change to repay that, what the deficit would be at the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. And as taxpayers in the, in the city of Norco, they are still getting some benefit, regardless of the LMD fees, they're still getting the same basic benefits that other city areas get, other than LMDs. Do they not?
They get the same benefits as everyone else. What they get is an increased benefit.
Right, for having the LMD.
Yes.
So the $83,000, they were getting benefits that the rest of the city wasn't getting for that $83,000, correct?
Yeah, if you want to look.
I'm just trying to understand, why were we forgiving $83,000 in debt? I know you want to get it passed. I just have a hard time with that.
My concern from a staff level is, is if we don't, if we do not look at it this way, and this is one of the things that was discussed in that part, one of the things is, is that if we could meet them halfway, they are willing to pay the increase and put it back into the infrastructure. And they were willing to do that. And they were willing, those who showed up, were willing to go out and fight for that. If it fails, the trail fencing in that district, when it falls and dilapidates, which it will, will just be removed. So along Hidden Valley, Norco Hills Road, and with the interior part of that assessment, there will be no trail fencing in the future. None at all. Unless the city steps in and pays for that infrastructure.
I just, I say that because as a person who lives in LMD, not in that one, but it's just, it's hard to just walk away from $83,000, but I'll defer to the rest of my, to the council members.
If I can jump in, I was at that meeting, and one of the things that was said, which was difficult to get around, the folks that were there that voted for it were quite upset that we bailed them out. They felt that we should not have put money toward that, which would have forced them to understand that this was a serious, they felt we never should have given that money. And so they felt that had we not done that, that the next go-round, they would have voted that in. And so I think what that tells us, one, is okay, I guess we shouldn't have done that. We were trying to be nice. But two, I mean, any city that has LMDs, guess what? This is your future. This is what you're going to face. People got to vote in these tax increases. But the reality is, is next time, we're just going to have to say, "We're really sorry you signed this contract." Personally, I think in this instance, we did vote, we did give the money against their vote, and I'm like you, I don't really, I feel like they're getting something special and extra, but at the same time, we gave the money that they voted against. And I think this is the only way we'll get it passed. I don't want to see that parkway and that neighborhood devalue in such a way that nobody really wants to live there. So I think if they go out and they really do what they say they're going to do, I think actually, $83,000 is a lot of money, but to preserve that neighborhood, I think it's well worth it on our end and the city's end as a whole to pass this with the hope that they will pass it. The problem is, is I worry they won't pass it anyway. That's my fear. But, but I just don't want to see that neighborhood go to the wild, wild, you know, Norco. That's, that's a bigger fear, especially since that entire parkway is such a key entrance to the golf course. I mean, it's a key entrance to the entire city.
Just to note, if it was to fail, it is built in, in the ballot, will ballot, will have it built in, that the level of maintenance would be reduced to a point to where that $16,000 would go back to pay back the debt. Now, understand, at the end of five years, that money would still stay in their fund balance for future improvements, but not for five years.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think this is going to probably go over to Brian.
I'm here in case you have questions.
I didn't want to hurt your feelings. Just to be clear on a couple of points, we have two resolutions. 2019-19 is the resolution that will address this $87,000 repayment. Is that correct? And then, and dash 20 would be the one just to authorize the Prop 218 vote, basically. Is that correct, Brian?
Correct. That the, 1920 does, authorizes that us to send the ballot out.
All right. So a couple of my concerns, and I disagree a little with what Kevin mentioned, was what I like to be sure about, in our last meeting that we had when we talked about this, I was under the impression that it was the majority opinion of council that we would include this debt structure, and that was based on an additional $16,000 a year for five years, basically. Okay? That was the direction that majority of council took?
That is correct.
Okay, the last time we talked about that. So with this forgiveness of the debt, help me to understand, when does that become like, like a gift to public funds? I'm making the assumption this 80-some thousand or 16 a year is going to come out of the general fund?
That is correct. It's already.
Yeah, it's already gone, out of the general fund. But to say to forgive it, is that a gift to public funds?
We should let the city attorney address it. I don't think it is.
Yeah, no.
Do you know that answer?
Yes. No, it's, no, it's not a gift to public funds. It's for public purpose. I mean, you might not think the public purpose is an appropriate one, but the statute allows, in fact, cities to make contribution to the improvements.
Yes.
Yes.
You agree with that?
I agree. It says in the, yes, that the city can.
Sure. You're asking an engineer to second-guess a lawyer.
I'm just restating what I've read in the, in the code.
I work more with engineers than attorneys. You're continually asking me to second-guess the engineers.
Yeah, Councilman Newton, I think the meeting we had with the residents in the park was one of the most compelling meetings I've had with those residents, where they were very supportive of wanting their neighborhood
very supportive of wanting their neighborhood to be sustained at a nice level. They're willing to pay that difference, and they are willing to, they are willing to want to see the trail fence not just be removed, they would like to see the new white vinyl fence that is the new standard. They know that they couldn't pay it all at one time, and this is their way. But I think the reason why staff came back with the recommendation, because you are correct, council did say, well, let's pay back debt, and we provided that to them. What they asked or pleaded was, and I thought it was very compelling, that, can you meet us this far? We're willing to do this. And the last, and we're willing to go out and actually support this, neighbor to neighbor. And I think you actually have a letter that was placed on file by one of the residents.
And I wanted to ask you about that next, Brian.
And so, that's why we came back with this particular recommendation.
So, within this letter from the resident, their statement of fact is that, as presented to us at the meeting on Saturday, April 27th, that the city was, one, agreeing to forever waive any retro shortfall deficit that the city has incurred for maintenance of LMD2 district for the period 2015 through current. Now, I would like you to deny that statement, or tell me why, who made that agreement on a Saturday morning, okay? And not for me.
Well, I think what they're maybe trying to say.
Exactly what it said.
Yeah, and I would disagree with that statement. What was said is, we will take back your recommendations to the city council. They ultimately make the decision in relationship to the engineers' report and annual budget. That, I felt that was very clear to everyone in that, that was there that day.
So you'll tell me you disagree with this statement in this letter?
I agree wholeheartedly with that statement.
That's a very good answer.
As to what they interpreted.
You know, the only little bit of heartburn I have with this is that, it's kind of what Ted's talking about with the LMDs, and, you know, I get it, but at the same time, it seems to me that all the residents in town that are not belonging to LMDs, that we're kind of contributing to that. But then, I take a little bit of offense that they don't want to, you know, pay that additional debt back, all right? But you enjoy a different level of service than the rest of us do. You know, that, I'm sorry, I live with broken fence, you know? I mean, it's just, and it's almost that if we're going to kick in $85,000 to help support LMD2, let's go ahead and kick in another $85,000 to support all the trail maintenance for all the folks in town that don't live in LMDs, instead of just this 20 grand a year that we just don't do anything with. So, I'm mixed with that. I don't think we're treating everybody equally or fairly.
If I could add to that, Mr. Newton. I think Councilmember Bash has summarized that what we are trying to create here is a win-win for both the residents in that LMD3, or LMD2, I'm sorry, and the entire residents of Norco. We believe maintaining that district in the standards that it should be maintained is to, forced to the benefit of that district directly, but indirectly to the benefit of the entire city. I think if a portion of the city gets dilapidated, decreasing the property values in that area of the city, I certainly believe it would have some impact on the rest of the city. We believe, again, the reason staff is bringing this back to the city council, we believe is a wise decision. If it leads to this Prop 218 being passed, and we believe, again, that both the city and the residents of that LMD benefits, and certainly, they have the responsibility, they still do have the responsibility, but in the interest of doing something that improves the total value to the city, zooming that this makes it pass, and that's why city staff is bringing back this to the city council.
I wanted to clarify. Did I follow up?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I get that, Andy, and what you say is very valid. My last question with all of this would be, by forgiving this debt, and what Kevin said about.
We're not forgiving it.
It's going to be repaid back if it passes, that, but the future of LMDs in general are going to be eventually short-lived at some point. Does this set any precedent for any other LMDs, whether it's numbers three, four, five, and six, or seven, or eight?
No, but let's pretend that the next one comes up with the same problem that this one had several years ago. It's, again, up to the council. The council, based upon this experience, may well say, we're not going to contribute, you know, the kind of what Kevin was saying, that here's what the maximum contribution is, and we're going to cut back improvements based upon that contribution. If you wanted any different, you're going to have to vote an increase. I think, I mean, I guess the council is learning from this experience what the.
Well, that's a projection, you know, for a council in the future.
Right. So the answer is no, there's no precedent established. Legal precedent is.
Other than the overall whole of the community.
We made a mistake. Here's the mistake we made. The way this worked out was they voted not to increase their taxes. We got phone calls from people who were upset that they didn't vote their taxes, but their trees were dying. So we, as a council, on our own, decided to give $85,000, and what they did on Saturday was they called us on it. The people that voted for it said, you gave us the money, we didn't ask for it, we voted it down. So I'll tell you right now, I will never do that again. But the truth of the matter is, is in a real, very real way, I'm going, wow, they voted against it, we gave it to them anyway. And what we should have done was said, really sorry, guys, you bought on that property, I mean, that's the way it goes, that's the way the cookie crumbles, I'm really, really sorry. So now we have a situation where we really have to have this passed. We, in my opinion, not we, I made the mistake of moving down that course. But now we have a situation where the entire entrance of the city, I don't want it to go to pot, we're still going to get benefit from that, but the reality is, my perspective is, my bad. I, instead of listening to the vote of the people, what I did was I listened to a few people who wanted to protect their neighborhood, but not pay the price, and I voted to put those funds forward. And that's, when I walked away, that's how I felt about the whole thing. I thought, man, oh, man, was I stupid. Because by now, they probably would have gotten the message and said, okay, we know where we live, we have to pay for it. And my hope is, is that that's what they do, because if they don't vote it in, if we do pass this, it's up to you guys, I know how I feel about it, that stuff's going to die. Those, that neighborhood will go downhill, and I dimes the donuts, there's going to be a future council that's going to pick up the cost of that parkway. And so it's going to end up costing us more than $85,000 anyway, and still, that'll be improvements to that part of the city. So that's just kind of my feeling about this whole thing. I feel really bad in every single direction about this thing.
Other questions?
One question, and I'm going to go back with what we said earlier about, we're getting to pay this debt, and I know you make a deal with them. But at the same time, that $16,000 would take five years to pay off that $83,000 in debt. But at the same time, we do have, as taxpayers in this city, and we're going to talk, and that's why I had you do, the last time we discussed that, why we did the parkway maintenance areas and the cost of that. And yes, that was, it was large, and it was huge. But we do have, the city has a trail fund, and if we're worried about maintaining the trail and the trail fence along that parkway, that can come out of that trail fund to do that area, especially along the common ways of, along Hidden Valley Road, and Norco Hills Road. We can use funds out of that to fix it. But I just have a hard time forgetting about, or just saying, oh, well, don't worry about $83,000 in debt. And yes, this council did approve, but we did it based upon what the engineering was saying, and the fact that homeowners up there, we had to protect their property. Those trees up there, those parkways, those are assets that are in this city. And we, as a city council, have to take some kind of a responsibility to maintain those assets. And I think that's why we approved it. So, but I just have a hard time of why we went ahead and made a deal, especially when the council gave direction on how we were going to do it.
There was no deal made.
No deal was made.
No, but I'm just.
And if I could add to what you just said, if we use other city fund to maintain this area that you described, in the long run, it's going to end up costing the city a whole lot more than $83,000. That means we're going to be maintaining that in perpetuity. And as you saw from the cost that was presented at the last time this was discussed, is substantial. This is a solution that fixes the problem, and going forward, the LMD should be collecting its sufficient funds to pay for the cost of maintaining that district.
Go ahead, Mark.
So Brian, on this vote that's coming up for them, if they decide not to do this, they're still going to get a $20 a month increase, is that what I'm reading on their, I mean, yeah, $20 a year.
Yeah. If it was to fail, they would have what the increase would be for the CPI, so that would go up to 685.29. But the level of service and maintenance would be drastically reduced in their assessment district.
Right, their fences would not be replaced, and.
If it was to pass, based on our recommendation, $16,000 would be placed in the Trail Fence Replacement Fund. The bottom line does not change. Should the council decide and give direction to count, to staff in the ballot, that that $16,000 should be to replace the deficit, the bottom line doesn't change, it just moves up to repay the deficit line item. So there is no, the bottom line doesn't change, the 985 would still be what would be on the ballot. There is no difference there. It just moves that $16,000 from that line item up to repay the deficit. If council agrees to put it there, then it would be, the debt would be forgiven, and it would remain in the Trail Fence Replacement Fund.
Okay, thank you.
A follow-up to your statement then, Brian. Are we giving you direction on to move that $16,000?
That's what staff's asking for.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Which, go back to which resolution?
We're recommending to put it in the, to put that $16,000 in the Trail Fund Replacement Fund.
The first resolution that I'd asked about.
That's what the engineers' report says.
Okay.
If council changes that, then the ballot would be done as such.
And that change would only be after we vote on this resolution?
No. If, I mean, your options at this point, kind of, I mean, there are lots of options, but the two you're talking about are either one, vote on the engineers' report as drafted, which will then be subject to the 218 vote. The current engineers' report as drafted provides that $16,000 goes to replace trail fences. The other option would be, again, I'm just talking about the two that we're talking about, would be to not adopt the engineers' report as drafted, except only as to the total assessment, and that $16,000, the engineers' report would be modified to reflect the $16,000 goes in.
Then we're on the same page with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions of staff at this time?
We do have some people from the district who would like to talk to you.
I know, I'm going to get to that when we get to the public comments. No other questions? Okay, so then we will move on to the public speakers. Madam Clerk, do you have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Hope Rodriguez.
I'm from LMD2, and I think I'm getting a completely different response to the 218. I don't know, I talked to the neighbors, we have gardeners. We take care of the whole area all the way to the curb, because we are not getting that service already. So we need to do that ourselves now. We have been. And then you want to increase our taxes again. I will give you pictures. Can I show you pictures?
Give them to the clerk, and she'll pass them around. Thank you.
And I have a lot more. The neighbors I have spoken to are not happy with the service we have gotten, and they are not happy with the increase. So, we are already maintaining our own areas. I trimmed a tree just the other day, because nobody did it. If you look at those pictures, maybe I should be getting paid that 985. And like I said, I've been cutting trees down, because the horses cannot even pass through there, because the trees are so low into the horse trail that I've cut them. That's all I wanted to say, and I wanted to show you those pictures. And my neighbors are also taking pictures. All right, okay. Thank you.
I have another card, Mayor. Mark and Susan Anderson.
How you doing?
Good.
Great, yourself?
Good.
Good to see you all. I want to also say thank you for your service to this community. We appreciate it, we haven't been here very many times, but I will say, the meeting that we had, we were at that meeting, that's why we wanted to speak. I thought we made a lot of headway. We haven't been at some of the maybe more contentious ones, and I don't know my neighbor. Hi, my name is Mark. Susan, what is your name?
Hope.
Hope. Hope, I didn't see you at that meeting Saturday, but I'd love to have had you there.
No, I was not able to make it.
So, let's see, Suzie, why don't you go ahead and share a couple of things you'd like to share, and then I'll finish it off.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to clarify that this gentleman did not go out of his way to agree upon anything. He said he would go in front of you guys to propose, right? So that's, I wanted to make sure that was mentioned. It appears that the majority of the neighbors are not going to approve it with that amount to be paid back.
Honestly, we can't say that. I won't say that. We don't know. We are willing to go and present the offer to the community. We will spend our time to get that done. We've lived there since 2001, we, Jeff is a real estate agent in the community, we brought him tonight. We do not want to see this community go downhill. We do not want to have that happen. And I would have paid whatever amount, the extra dollars, with $85,000. That's where I'm coming from. But as we were at the meeting, and we heard some people that were there, we were like, we've got to figure out a way to solve this, because there's some people that are dug in, and you read the letter, I could probably tell you who that came from, I think, I'm not sure, but they're dug in because they, we voted, by the way, for the, we voted for everything.
Yeah, exactly.
With the $85,000. For us, it didn't matter. But I get it from their side, that once it was said no, they would have preferred, maybe it would have been better, that we just let it go. Because we were thinking, if we can get maybe an engineer to draw up what it looked like when we don't do it?
Yeah.
Then everybody would probably do it.
Right.
And that's where we're coming from, is like, wow, for $20-something dollars a month, whatever the number would be. We agree with our friend. I have a place that river runs through my driveway every time it rains, and we can't get our car out, it's been that way since I've lived there. But guess what? I live there, and this way it's going to be until I move. And I'm okay with that.
Yeah, unfortunately, though, if this fails, and we have no water, and the shrubs are removed, you know, because we're in Norco Hills, there's a lot of the streets, not are removed, you know, because we're in Norco Hills, there's a lot of the streets, not all of them, that are on the hill, literally, that erosion because there's no plant material or trees, it's going to be nightmare. One of our neighbors said, you know, I'm not happy with the service and there's water that goes in our driveway. I said, oh, don't worry about the water. You're going to have DG. It's going to be a nightmare, right? So, that's part of this, you know, too. It's, it's just not even aesthetics, it's what it's going to do in the winter. It's going to be bad.
So, you know, things can be contentious, I know they can. And every point that's made, I don't disagree with anybody here. But I do believe we should come together. I don't think $85,000 in the way that we talked about it. And I didn't come up with that. That was a good plan. And the lady who was the most vocal on, man, I'm just not, not going to agree because you know what, I didn't vote for that, I didn't, whatever, let them- got all settled down, we came together, and this is what we, I think, all came up with. I think that if we do this, I'll go out and present it to the neighborhood. I heard that some, somebody else went out and kind of derailed the whole thing before. I don't know who that was, but they didn't make it easy on anybody going forward. So, someone's going to have to get back out and reach out to the people and come to an agreement. And that's what we're hoping that we can do. We love our community, we don't want to have it derailed, so to speak. We'd love to see it with the nice, beautiful white vinyl fencing someday before we turn 85. So, we're just here to try to help in having any way we can.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Jeff, you want to say anything?
Did he fill out a, he has his card? Yes. Okay. Hi, Jeff.
How you doing? Local Realtor, Jeff knows Norco Hills. Some of you know me or at least heard of me. See my signs every weekend broadly. I love it up there. And if we let it go down the tubes, it's going to hurt the city. That's an entryway, and you don't want that to die and fence posts to go over and start falling over. And it'll just be, it's too nice of an area. And we don't have sidewalks or anything, so our big thing is the horse trail and the fencing and the shrubs. Is there better maintenance that could be done? Probably. Sometimes it gets out of hand, but I know one thing, if we call, they'll come out and look at it and fix it for us. So, I'm here tonight. You know, our homes took a hit up there where we got all the way down to about $450,000 for a home that was worth $900,000. And I don't want that to happen again. We've changed our banking industry and I don't think it's going to happen again, but it sure would hurt our values up there till everything die. So, I'm here tonight. I know I've talked to Kevin many times, and I just want that to be right to where I live. I've sold over 70 homes up there and I don't want to lose that. I don't like, I don't want to go anywhere else to work. I want to work where I, up there in Norco Hills. I hope we can all put it together. And let's keep it alive, guys, because it'll hurt. It's an entryway. It'll hurt all of us. It'll hurt the whole city, I believe.
Thanks, Jeff.
That's all the cards on that.
That's all the cards for this, so we're going to go ahead and close the public comment. So, we're going to bring it back to council for discussion and action. So, I'm just going to go ahead and go down the line for discussion from each member and then we'll see what kind of a motion we end up with. So, Berwyn, do you have any comments or discussion?
No more.
Ted?
I understand where the residents are coming from. Really, I do. I live in LMD 4. I know. And we had to pay for all our improvements, too. Kevin makes a good point. And yes, we did approve every one of those engineering studies every year where we kept increasing that fund and that debt. Was it our fault? Yeah. Trying to keep that neighborhood presentable. And we did that. But that's 251 homes?
Two hundred and nineteen.
There's another 6,000-some sitting out that didn't get that benefit. So, that's where I look at it. And what do we tell them? And that is a gateway. And I've always said, we have to maintain it, we have to water it, we have to keep those fences up on that gateway. Because you're correct. Nobody wants to buy it when it looks dilapidated and downtrodden. And the trees are dying. So, I'm in, I'm sitting between a rock and a hard spot, and my city manager's sitting over there, and he's correct. It would cost us a whole lot more than $83,000. So, somewhere along the line, we have to make a decision is to give you guys the ability to keep that trail fence up, and that $16,000 is where we're at. And do I write off $83,000 for the lack of getting, you know, keeping that area looking nice? And maybe I have to. But I'm still debating it right now, but I will, that's something that I have to decide, and I will listen to the rest of my council members to figure it out because I'm a little prejudiced because I already paid my LMD fees and I know what they are here, so.
Councilman Bash?
Just, just as a side note, 10 years ago, when I got on council and Berwyn was there, we had a lot of trouble keeping up the trails in the hills. Lot of trouble. We switched it over, completely redid how it happened, but there's one component that you have to follow. If you have a problem, you have to call. Call me, call any council person. If something isn't being maintained, use your council. There's no reason that you, if you've got weeds or something that are in your parkway, there's absolutely no reason that you should be doing that yourself. Which, by the way, is costing you way more money than what this increase is. I just planted five trees. It cost me $1,000 when all is said and done. To maintain those every month is way more than what it's going to cost for this, this increase. My big concern is, one way or another, we're going to pick up Hidden Valley. You guys are responsible for the entire length of Hidden Valley. That's your area. And so, if this doesn't pass, at some point down the line, as that dies, we will probably end up having to pick that up. And that's going to be way more than the 16,000 a year, 85,000, whatever it is. I don't like it, actually. I mean, I realize we made a mistake. I don't want to pay the money. The LMDs are, I mean, these tax, taxing districts, as I've said before, I stood right there and I spoke against them. I said, someday, these are going to be a problem. We're lucky we only have five of them in our city. There are some cities with 40 of them. And they don't, you tell them, you go, hey, guess what's going to happen to you guys? Come to this meeting, you're going to find out. So, I personally am going to support the recommendation of staff, but I'll go with whatever the rest of the council wants to go. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the time.
Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the residents' comments and your concern. Brian, part of that, even though it's just a few comments, is presently, they, X amount of dollars are paid by this LMD, and it doesn't seem like they're getting the level of service. It seemed to be underlying complaints about having to have their own gardeners do trail cleanup or weeding and DG running down the, the street.
During rain conditions, DG runs down the streets-
But, no, I certainly know their condition very well.
Right. That's, that's a common thing. One of our priorities, though, is always to make sure, and I think those who are here would say, we're out there fast to get driveways opened and then work on the trails. I'm looking at these pictures.
Let's go away from the rainy season. I know that's-
But I'm not aware, we have an inspector for that location, and he's very responsive to those calls when we do get them. I'm looking at this particular area on these pictures, and I'd have to go out and actually look at it. But to me, that looks like private property, not part of the assessment district. But I'd have to go out and verify that. So, but we are always willing, and I would like to talk, to get Hope's number, and we'll be out there tomorrow morning to, to take a look at that area. And I do know Bob's very responsive to any calls he gets to try and make sure we remedy those situations. In fact, from our meeting on that Saturday, we've already initiated some planting and some other tree replacements from some things that we found that were deficiencies, and Brightview is going to do that for us.
Okay. As far as the other, if, if it fails, you know, I understand that the exposure on Norco Hills Road or Hidden Valley, and, and yeah, I guess we would have to end up maintaining it, but it's going to be at the level of service that, I always say, that we all enjoy, which is no level of service if you're not in an LMD. We don't, we don't spend very, very little money on that. So, I think that falls back to the residents on how you want your gateway to your neighborhood to look, okay? Because I'll tell you how mine looks, all right?
That's why you passed Measure R, though, to help you.
Uh-huh. After it knocks the fillings out of my teeth, all right? So, just not sure yet, though. But I appreciate all your input and your report, Brian. Thank you, Mayor.
So, as for my comments, LMDs have not been my favorite thing. Since being on council, I feel like every time they come up, we have these lengthy discussions. And I think it's been mentioned before, they're somewhat unsustainable at some point in time. When we come to the discussion on LMD 2 and what we're talking about tonight, some very good points have been brought up. I wholeheartedly agree that the mistake was made to give the money in the first place. There should have been a lack of services, and then the residents could have reevaluated from there, and we probably wouldn't be in this boat today. So, you know, depending on how the vote goes, we're either going to take an $83,000 hickey now or potentially a substantially larger one later when the level of service in this LMD potentially fails. I do feel like we're darned if we do and darned if we don't on this one. However, I would make the argument because of the location of this particular LMD, it does benefit all of the residents of Norco because it's a gateway area. I would make the argument that we've spent money on the gateway on our northeast part of town. I would make the argument that we've made expenditures on the south, the Hamner entrance to this town, to improve those gateway areas. So, I don't think in terms of huge inequities that in this particular case, that I couldn't make the argument that it's not as huge as maybe it's perceived right now because of the gateway work that we've done in two areas of town already, which I'm going to guess money-wise would probably be about the same for what we're looking to, in my opinion, invest in making sure this gateway area is maintained at an acceptable area for our And then I'm kind of with Kevin. I will never contribute unapproved money to an LMD while I'm on this council, again. Period. So, that's kind of where I'm at and what my point of reference is. If Hidden Valley looks like a horrible place, that's going to impact the businesses. We have, you know, potentially another commercial area going in over there right now as it is. We have people going to the golf course through that area. And I think the impact economically would be much larger than we could even probably fathom at this particular point in time. And it's going to be impacts well beyond myself or anybody up here, potentially even my children. So, my job as a council member is to make sure that I'm protecting Norco now, and I have enough forethought to be able to protect Norco for my children and my grandchildren. And so, that's how I'm going to make my decision this evening and try and look at the really, really big picture. And in that really, really big picture is taking an $83,000 hickey one time and learning my lesson for the greater cause than what we're doing right now. So, with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-19. Oh. Done. Councilmember Newton voting no.
Okay, is there another motion? I'll move to adopt Resolution 2019-20. Setting the hearing with the ballot language that's included, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Yeah, I have a second.
May please vote on this item.
All right, very good. So, we are going to go on to number seven, which is our public hearing. The order of the public hearing is as follows. We're going to have a staff report presentation. I will have council questions of staff. We will have an open public hearing. Those public speakers in favor, against, and neutral. I will then close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and action. So, at this time, we're looking at 7A, which are amendments to the city's miscellaneous fee schedule for fiscal year 2019-2020 and acceptance of the comprehensive fee study and cost allocation plan. Gina, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The staff report today is recommending, and the public hearing, recommending adoption of Resolution 2019-21, updating and adjusting the city's fee schedule for 2019-2020, and also to receive and file the fee study and cost allocation plan. As you're familiar, user fees and charges are collected to recover some or all of costs incurred in providing a specific service from which one or more individuals obtain a benefit. City departments have been working with revenue cost specialists, President Eric Johnson, since November 2018 and determining the time required to provide certain services as well as providing measurements for allocation of overhead. City staff was interviewed regarding the processes and time to complete the service associated with the fee as well as service provided on citywide processes. Results of the interviews is a proposed fee studied and the cost allocation plan. City council reviewed each service and suggested recovery rates to determine how much of each service should be recovered through fees and how much should be subsidized through city tax dollars. On April 17th, we had a study session from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and May 1st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., with a, doing a recreation fee study review. During the course of the study session, city council provided the following direction: no increase in rates for additional animal units. Fee remains $79. No fee for one-day ABC license for nonprofits. And a clarification on the temporary sign event, sign review. The PACA, the name of a fee called PACA Creation Relocation was renamed to PACA Relocation. And regarding recreation fees, no changes were made at this time. A CPI increase of three, possibly 3% will be considered and implied to applicable fees. Over the next year, staff will study the costs associated to recovery of facility maintenance and replacement, determine the recovery rate of full cost and its comparison within the market rate for like facilities. In addition, our fee schedule, we have two new fees that are being proposed. A city flag deposit for $250. The city of Norco wishes to make available the city of Norco city flag to citizens, organizations, interested groups, or individuals who would like to fly the city's flag during ceremonies, activities, or community events. The deposit will cover any cleaning, repairs, or replacements. And then an actual cost for collection fees. The city has acquired a new collection agent for all past due payments for delinquent accounts, and the cost for collection would be added to the delinquent amount owed. Eric Johnson is here to provide an overview of the last few months, and I'd like to thank staff as well for their time and as well as your time in reviewing this process.
Thank you, Gina. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the councils. Good to be before you again this evening. I'll provide a very brief overview of, of what we talked about. And so, basically, as for the, for the members of the audience who didn't hear the presentation earlier, we're basically took the city budget and turned it into what it would look like if it were a business. And so, we costed out the services and identified- And so basically, as for the, for the members of the audience who didn't hear the presentation earlier, we're basically took the city budget and turned it into what it would look like if it were a business. And so we costed out the services and identified what is the cost to provide services to your customers. And so we have the, the long list of services that we looked at through this process, well over 100 services, mostly in the development services area, planning, building, engineering. To identify that cost, we sat down with staff, we identified what the time spent was, we identified the fully burdened hourly rate, so salaries, benefits, operating expenses, city overheads, department overheads. The city overheads came from the cost allocation plan, where we took a very detailed look at how much overhead should be applied fairly to each area, and I came up with the cost. Then we sat down with the departments again to identify what is the best way to recover those costs, and in most cases, to recover 100% of those costs. As, as I'm fond of saying, these costs are occurring. It's now a question of who's going to pay for them. And so through the study session, the council made some recommendations to subsidize certain fees, especially in the, in the animal and horse area, which is reflected in the fee resolution before you tonight. I do briefly want to talk about the Building Industry Association sent a couple of memos expressing their concerns about the building fees. And I do appreciate the BIA's, you know, its vigilance to make sure that cities aren't overcharging developers for the cost providing plan check and inspection services. I don't think that's what's happening here, though. We took a look at what are the total costs to providing building and safety services, again, as, as a business would, fully burdened, including not only the building inspection, plan check time, the contract time, the time that planning spends reviewing building plans, and all the overheads associated with that. We then compared that to the total revenues, looking at the revenues for this year, and found it was recovering about 88% of its cost. So not overrecovering, so we recommended a 10% increase to be conservative, to get the fees closer to 100% of the cost. Because the city's been using this fee model, this valuation fee model, for a number of years, and it works well. It's just not quite recovering the cost anymore. So we're just suggesting that increase to get up closer to full cost. It was suggested in the memo that you can take a look at the building apartment budget and compare that to the building apartment revenues, and determine whether or not you're overrecovering or underrecovering for building. I believe that's incorrect, just because governmental accounting does a great job of identifying what a cost for an apartment, and what are the costs in those departments, but doesn't do a good job of identifying what are the costs of providing services to your customers. And so that's what we did through this process, and identified that full cost, not just what's in the building apartment budget. So the city is not overrecovering on its building and safety fees. There was a concern that the available work hour number was too low, 1,437, which we start out with the 2,080 hours in most cases, and back out to holiday vacation, sick leave. In this case, though, Norco has a 36-hour work week. And so it's, that's 200 hours right off the top that it's not going to be there because that's not, those, those hours were cut away during the recession, from what I understand. So that is why the available work hour number is low, but at the same time, the salaries are also lower than what you'll see for similar positions in other agencies. There was a concern that we didn't look at a 10-year cycle of building, of revenues. And there's times where we have, when we look at the revenue and see a, a cycle. We're, we're trying to capture the building cycle when we look at the revenues. For Norco, it's been a steady increase since the recession, and the last few years have been relatively flat. So that's why I felt comfortable looking at that one-year revenues instead of a 10-year cycle. There was also concern that valuation is not an accurate way of recovering the cost. You pick your poison with this. There's valuation, which is estimating based on the cost of the project. There's square foot models, which estimate based on the size of the project and the type of construction. They all have their pluses and minuses. You know, valuation, the, the very large projects may be, it's hard to estimate those. When you get to a square footage, large valuation, you're maybe not capturing the, the improvements. You may have some fancy improvements on a project that requires extra work, but if you're just looking at square footage, you're missing that. So there are different ways of recovering the cost. Norco, as most other cities in the state frankly, use the valuation method, have been using this method for a number of years, staying within their cost with that method, and that's why we recommend continuing to use this method. There was also a concern that combination fees, where there should be a fee for new construction that includes building, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. The way the city does it, and the way most cities do it frankly, is they charge the building fee, which is the valuation, and then there's multiple count fees for how many outlets you have, and how many vents you have, and that sort of thing, to cover the other part. Many cities have a combination fee, but they don't charge this. So one way or another, you're charging more for mechanical electrical plumbing, because those reviews have not been built into the building fees. The city has, has traditionally done it this, this way, where it's the valuation plus the counting for the mechanical electrical plumbing. Most cities do it that way. There could be a combination fee, but at the end of the day, you're still recovering those costs. You're still charging more for mechanical electrical plumbing as a combination fee. So we feel comfortable with the, the way the city's doing it now, and that it's recovering the cost, and recovering the cost fairly. Those were the comments I had on the billing, the BIA letter.
I may as well make a couple of comments, having been involved in this since the, with the late Dick McCarthy since the mid-'90s, when you were a boy. Essentially, what the statute requires is that the, a city council set fees based upon the estimated reasonable cost. And there's, BIA indirectly through Mr. McCarthy and Palladine Group took the position that Dick's way, which was much what the BIA is proposing in its letter to you, was the only way of doing it. That was litigated most recently, because there hasn't been any dispute about it, in the Jenkins versus City of Corona case. And basically, what that case held was that there is no magic way of doing it. I'm not being critical, I, Dick and I actually were very good friends, and I, I agree that though his approach accurately predicts what the costs are, but it's just not the only way of doing it. And the, the court in Jenkins held that was the case, that this is a discretionary act of the city council, and as long as your decision isn't arbitrary and capricious, and not based upon any substantial facts, that the court upholds it. The arguments that, or I shouldn't say arguments, suggestions, because that's really what the BIA letter to the city was, were suggestions, that those suggestions were addressed in, literally addressed in the Jenkins case. That was Mr. McCarthy's testimony. The, give him a little pat on the head. Mr. Johnson was the expert who testified on behalf of the city of Corona. And the city of Corona ultimately was, was successful. And so as long as there is logical factual support for your decision, it's ultimately discretionary with the city council. Again, not being critical of the BIA, whose approach also is valid. If you have any questions, I'm happy to ask them.
Does council have any questions? Councilman Newton? Did you have a question?
Oh, okay.
No, you were reaching for your microphone. I made an assumption. Sorry.
You made an assumption, Mayor.
Yes, I did.
I'll try to think of a couple.
The Cubs lost. Was that your question?
Yeah, I saw that.
You see that? Should have been paying attention.
I was watching Harper's text message. On both sides of this equation, that I know here in Norco, the way we do it is, you know, you're going to pay the building evaluation, then you're going to spend separate additional fees for electrical, mechanical, plumbing, trash enclosure, who knows what, right? All the way down the line. Being on the other side of that, it is a pain in the butt to do that, all right? And I always thought it'd be much simpler, let me just write one check, okay? So I see that side of it. I'm trying to figure out, and, but I'm, I'm happy with, you know, what we did as a council and the way our fees are. I'm trying to find the real heartburn with this BIA, BIA letter, that Steve, what's our inventory on new construction residential? Is it one house or two houses this year?
It was one last year.
One, okay. This strikes me as a, as a form letter from a lobbyist, okay? That if you're a community that loves to build track homes, and you got 500 pads in a row, that the complaint is that an inspector can just drive down the street, because every cookie cutter lot is the same, all right? And if you're charging on a square foot basis, you're probably paying too much, right? Where he could probably look at 50 pads in 15 minutes, because they're all identical.
And same issue on the plan check side.
Mm-hmm. I mean, am I reading too much into this, or there's something more to this letter than...
Well, it is something we always address, because that is a valid issue. Back in the '90s, agencies were charging for track homes the same fee for the first home as the 50th home. And especially on the plan check side, that didn't make sense.
Right.
And so, yeah, you have this duplicate fee, this repetitive plan check fee. We raised the issue, it's just not an issue here. We don't have the tracks, and so it's...
And in answer to your question, that's the, the genesis of this entire dispute. Mr. McCarthy was a builder in Palm Springs. He became associated with Barrett American. And Barrett American, particularly in Southern Riverside County, was building like crazy.
10,000 homes.
And in fact, the city of Murrieta, after litigating with Dick, ultimately agreed that for their purposes, since they were building so many houses, that his approach made more sense, and they went to, to...
Right.
But in a smaller community, it doesn't mean that was the only way of doing it, but it made sense in that. And in a, you know, community where you're talking about four or five houses, it doesn't have any impact at all.
I mean...
But it was the large residential tract that generated it.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this letter as a nonstarter to me, because we don't have that residential exposure that if we built one house, and then maybe last, or the year before, we did two custom homes.
Or like, like in Eastvale, for example.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this, I mean...
Sorry.
This should, you know, work for Eastvale, you know? And I appreciate everything Clint does. As a council person, I give you all the respect in the world, but since you're not at the podium, I'm not going to take you to task. Step up, though.
Other questions?
I have one, Madam Mayor. I think this goes back to, to Gina. And when I attended the landscape maintenance districts meetings, other than two, the one thing that came to mind was the parking violation fee. If I recall, when those folks met with us last time, when they had their problems on hand illusion and cross rail, a cross trail, I think it's cross rail, Valley, Van Romulon, and Crestview, there was a large parking violation. In our fee schedule, it's still sitting at $36. And we had talked at that time about raising it to make it more of a deterrent. And I still see it's $36 for parking violation, and...
I thought we did, too.
And I, and I don't see where that's, $36 is a deterrent. I mean, we, we have to curtail, it's on page 29.
I won't stake my life on it, but I believe it's statutory.
If we use the municipal code, the municipal code violation...
Admin site, eventually.
Yeah, admin site, just like it's on there.
Okay, yeah, that is...
What's the municipal court?
It's under municipal...
Yeah, the municipal code section, in section 10.08, oh, 30. Now that's for Equestrian Trail.
I do recall, I, I could be wrong, when Lieutenant Braddock was here, we looked at this issue. And I believe this is the fee that, that he came back with and suggested, and that was what was put in the code. Certainly something that we can look, look at it again at some point, and bring back a code amendment to, to increase that.
Yeah, it is, because there's no deterrents and $36. And we're going to continue up there, the same problem we had last summer. So if we can, I don't mind if, for the council, we agree to a code, code amendment for future. Well, thank you.
Other questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
Clint Lorremore.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff. My name is Clint Lorremore. I'm the Director of Government Affairs with the Building Industry Association, Riverside County Chapter. I want to thank you for reviewing the information that we submitted. I brought a copy of the letter, I think you guys have seen it. Those are the four bullet points that, that was at least on our, our first go. We did send an additional number of pages yesterday. And on that point, our consult, on one of the points that was raised by Councilmember Newton, is I was going through and editing those comments. It is not a form letter, they are individualized for every city. Some of the other points that were brought up here, rather than, I appreciate the presentation that was given a little bit earlier in relation, in answering some of the questions. I think, though, that we should step back and think of the context in which we are in. We are in the middle of a housing crisis. Yes, we do have only a couple of permits pulled in the city of Norco, and then we got to ask ourselves, why is that? Well, maybe it's fees like these. And, you know, I say that, I say that respectfully, but Norco is an attractive city. It's horsetown USA. Many people want to live here. Let's invite them in. Let, let's create a, a policy environment, a fee structure that welcomes people to the city of Norco. More than this, this fee structure, it is true, the development community is not being impacted by this. You know who's being impacted by this? Your local residents. Those that are here in town, that are, that are doing a remodel on their home. So you can say, and it is true, it is subjective, it is up to the jurisdiction as to what model they use. The model here is not incorrect. That being said, it definitely is in favor of the city, as opposed to the person bringing forward plans or fees to be, to be paid, so that they can build a new home and live here in town. Let me see here. One of the key things in particular is those hours that were mentioned, the fully burdened hourly rate. We look at that 2,080 instead of the 1,437 that is being used by the city. Those numbers make a difference when we start looking at the hours, and that was detailed in the second analysis I sent over. I'm running out of time, but I would like to say thank you for your consideration on this item, and we would urge a no vote on this, but alternatively, if it's not a no vote, we would still love to bifurcate the issue and be able to sit down with staff and the consultant to discuss the building department fees. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other cards?
That's all the cards on this item.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Council have any other comments or a motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the...
Resolution 2019-21.
There it is. Resolution 2019-21, updating and adjusting the city's general fee schedule for fiscal year 1920.
Please vote on this item.
Do we have to do this one separate?
Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, I will move to receive and file the fee study and cost allocation plan.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to 7B, which is also a public hearing. And this is ordinance 1051, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Norco, adding chapter 2.02, official city seal, to the Norco municipal code. And we will have that report from the city clerk. And we will have that report from the city clerk.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, this agenda item proposes adding a chapter to the Norco Municipal Code, which would protect the city seal and establish, excuse me, and would establish official design standards and uses for the city seal. In 1964, the Norco City Council adopted the form of the city seal by resolution. However, a policy or ordinance was not adopted to govern or protect its use. About three, it took about three decades. Back in 1993, staff attempted to copyright the city seal with the United States Copyright Office, but was denied under a 1909 law, because the city seal had been in public domain for many years, and hence, copyright protection was lost permanently. Going back to 1965, the minutes that were found for meeting March 15, 1965, the city council meeting noted that the city manager recommended a graphical city seal depicting some commendable aspect of the city, and suggested having a contest for residents to submit ideas. 19 entries were submitted, and it appears that Thomas Moore, his design was selected, tentatively however, as the council wanted to consider minor alterations. So, this is a depiction of a seal that was found in our files. A newspaper article that was given to me by Councilmember Bash from 1965 noted that there was some dispute about the proposed design, because it was too similar to the seal that was held at that time by the Norco Agriculture Association. So, since then, there have been some modifications, just a minor, back to what we have today. So, unfortunately, there are limited records to explain the decision-making process behind the design of the city seal. However, the city seal that's shown there has been used in an official capacity for over 40 years, and is extremely recognizable, and represents the great value and reputation of the entire organization. And I just wanted to briefly go through some of the photos or images that were found in our files. So, this one from May 31, 1969, which appears to be letterhead, shows something similar to the seal that I have shown there. But beyond that, our current city seal has been used since 1978, or even earlier than that. I don't have a date on this photo, but it shows a city vehicle with the city seal there marked in that box, that red box. That actually is a seal that is...
We call.
This is from, from what I gather, from 1987, 1988, and that seal is currently hanging in the city council office in City Hall. That is a trail adoption sign, but again, has our current graphical seal. This is from 2001, on the side of our Singer Shuttle. The arena. Our step and repeat are from our latest state of the city address. Fire trucks. So, again, just samples of how it's been used over the last several decades. Pike Peak Park. So, the city seal has been used as the main identifier of the City of Norco, and is often used in official capacities. With the advent of electronic media, the city seal is often distorted, replaced with unauthorized imagery, used improperly, and is not given the prestige it deserves. Similar to the American flag, the city seal symbolizes the values, the values of the City of Norco was founded on. It is a sacred item that should be held in high regard and handled with respect. This ordinance would be a tool for the city to help ensure that the official city seal is replicated correctly, and is used only for purposes directly related to the official business of the City of Norco, or as expressly authorized by the city manager. So, with this, staff recommends that the city seal be protected in the municipal code, so that authorized design standards and uses can be properly enforced. That concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Does council have any questions of staff? No questions? All right, so this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there any cards on this item?
No cards on this item, Mayor.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and bring it back to council for discussion and action.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Norco, adding chapter 2.02, official city seal, to the Norco Municipal Code, relating to the custody and use of the official seal, city seals, code amendment 2019-03.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so we're going to move on to agenda item number eight, which is City Council, City Manager, and Staff Communications. Steve, I'm going to start with you, because you haven't been picked on at all tonight.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. I have not...
Okay. Sam, welcome, anything? Okay. Matt? Nothing. Cheryl?
Nothing to report.
Councilman Newton? Councilman Bash?
Trivia. As you know, Doris Day just died. Doris Day, during World War II and during the Korean War, came to Norco many, many times, and entertained, and visited with troops, so may she rest in peace at 97. I mean, she probably came here 30 times.
Mr. Harper?
Nope.
Andy?
Not this one.
Ted?
Memorial Day, the veterans' memorial up there at Ingalls Park. Please be there, Monday, May 27.
Berwin?
Yeah, Brian. I noticed last night up there at Nellie Weaver, on the southeast corner outside the building there, there's still a puddle of water. Don't want that damage the building? It comes off that slope from the 4H barn area up there. There's a big, long puddle of water that's been back there for a while.
We'll go and take a look at it. We might have a head or something that's broken there, but we'll go out tomorrow morning and take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant?
Just a quick introduction. You all know that Daryl got promoted, and we have a new deputy in his position, and he happens to be here tonight, so just to put a face with the name, Deputy Jonathan Carrier will be replacing Daryl in the new cops position.
Welcome. Brian?
Just another reminder, the Bruin Q, June 1, so big event coming up for barbecue, so...
Very good. So, we got a text message from Chief Lane. He would ask that, as we close the meeting tonight, that we have in our thoughts Battalion Chief Ballwich and Captain Morris, both were critically injured today in the line of duty in unrelated incidences. So, I'm going to ask if we can have a couple of seconds of reflection before we close the meeting with our thoughts and prayers with those two. This meeting is adjourned.